It's a great day in Kershaw County, all American county. We, the people, can celebrate today. Democracy in action. We can also celebrate the Army birthday, for those of you who are Army. We are celebrating that at the Burns household. When I get home tonight, maybe I can get some sleep, too. We are called to order with everybody present, and I ask you all to stand, and Ben Connel will lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we're thankful for our many blessings. We're grateful to be here today, and we pray for thy guidance and wisdom. We recognize that we are weak and imperfect, and we pray for humility in thy Spirit as we try to make decisions that benefit this county. We pray for those that mourn and struggle, that they might be lifted up and have peace and comfort that passes all understanding through thee. We pray for those who put themselves in harm's way to serve and lift up others, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Act of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much indeed. I'm going to do a little surgery with the agenda when we get to adoption of the agenda. But the first one has to do with the two public presentations you see on the screen. We have two of those, one for the 250th Commission, which I'm looking forward to, and then secondly, the item number two. Chief, you and I talked about this today. We'll move that later on with the concurrence and suggestion of the county council. To item number one under New Business, when we get to that item under Amendment of the Agenda. So I'm taking a chairman's prerogative just to not do a public presentation on LFD until the appropriate time, and the battalion chief has asked me to do that. So with that, let's go to the first item, which is South Carolina 250th Commission. Mr. Carpenter, can you help us out here?
Mr. Chairman, Members Council, as you are probably aware, Kershaw County played a significant role in the events of roughly 250 years ago. And the state of South Carolina has decided that it's a state we're going to recognize the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution. And so the 250th Commission was created. They have asked to be here tonight in order to make a presentation to the county council.
Very good. And typically, we take about 15 minutes for this, so if you can leave some time for questions, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'm Molly Fortune. I am--
Bring the microphone down to ground level. There you are. Molly Fortune, welcome.
Ground level? I'm not that short.
Welcome.
Thank you. I am Molly Fortune. I'm the executive director of the South Carolina Sester Centennial Commission. That is a mouthful. I actually am here on behalf of the commissioners to give Mr. Carpenter a commendation. He has served dutifully for this commission and has brought it from the ground to where it is, and has been an integral part of creating what we have today, which is a very strong foundation to continue forward with the work of the commission. I do hope to be back and present to the county council on more of what Kershaw County is going to do. But right now, I'd like to celebrate Mr. Carter and read, if you will, this commendation. And I will have to say the word "Sester Centennial" twice. In recognition of extraordinary service and leadership to the American Revolutionary Sester Centennial Commission of the state of South Carolina, the commissioners wish to thank Mr. Vic Carpenter for his extraordinary service. Mr. Carpenter is a South Carolina native graduating from the University of South Carolina with a degree in management and labor relations. Mr. Carter has served both the United States and the state of South Carolina with distinction with service to the Boy Scouts of America, to his public service career with Anderson County as the Director of Environmental Services, and then to the position of Assistant County Administrator for Environmental Services. Further, while serving the citizens of South Carolina as County Manager of Greenwood County, interim Director of Abbeville County-- interim Director of Abbeville County, and finally, serving as the County Administrator of Kershaw County. Mr. Carpenter's service to the citizens of South Carolina has earned him two Mitchell Graham Awards for Innovative County Government, as well as three Barrett-Latimore Regional Cooperation Awards, while serving in Anderson and Kershaw Counties both received the All-American City Award respectfully. Mr. Carpenter's outstanding dedication to public service and promotion of the state of South Carolina is most evident in his service as a Commissioner on the South Carolina Revolution Sester Centennial Commission. His service and leadership as the Commission Treasurer and through his work, has been integral in propelling the entire commission into the spotlight, always promoting the history of the revolution to all persons within the state. The entire South Carolina Revolution Sester Centennial Commission is grateful for the contributions, conversations, and insight Mr. Carpenter has provided to the overall recognition and celebration of the events of the revolutionary era within the state of South Carolina. His dedication to serving all populations throughout the state is exemplary, and the commission is grateful for his volunteer service. The South Carolina Revolution Sester Centennial Commission extends gratitude for these hours of service, insight, and leadership to Mr. Carpenter, and his name is forever linked to the history and service of South Carolina, agreed and executed on June 10 by all members. Son Charles. Charles could not be here.
In the 18th century, we do a huzzah.
Huzzah!
So give him!
Huzzah!
Give him!
Huzzah!
Why don't you come up here for a photo op real quick? And as you're doing that, I want to steal a march on this. During the Revolution, cavalry soldiers wore what was called a gorget, which protected what is the throat. In French, gorget is throat, all right? So me and Vic have been talking long about that. And the gorget was worn like this to protect the cavalry soldier from a sword thrust from the ground. And I have made one up for you from the Revolutionary War, because after the Revolutionary War, those who fought as officers in the Revolution would wear this to dinner parties as their badge of distinction. As you know, in America, there's no meritocracy. There's only those who deserve it by their service to their fellow man. And I think I give this to Vic Carpenter. Would you come on up, and we'll get a picture?
Yeah, it's a boy being pictured for 11 years.
Is that right?
It's made in ancient Rome.
First baby.
It's kind of like a bear.
Yeah.
He's trying to protect his tongue. One, two.
Applause.
Come on! Come on! Come on! Come on!
Well, thank you very much indeed. What a welcome way to treat a long-serving servant of this county and a very important thing that was near and dear his heart, the Revolutionary War, and celebrating that here in South Carolina. We move now to the next item, having skipped over the LFD budget. A public hearing in regards to an ordinance by the Kershaw County to amend the Uniform Unified Code of Zoning and Land Development Regulations, the ZLDR Article 6, right of appeal. I'll open the public comments. Mr. DeBose, has anybody signed up? Mr. Chairman, no one signed up. Okay, very good. We'll close the hearing and move on to public comments. Mr. DeBose, has anybody signed up? Uh, one person signed up, David Ruer, but I don't know whether he's already spoken or not.
No, sir. It's all the different--
Yeah.
We fight--
Mr. Ruer, we'll try to keep it to about five minutes. Go ahead, please.
We're blessed. We fight, get beat, rise, and fight again. That's the watchwords of the Southern campaigns of the American Revolution. I'm here tonight just to speak on behalf of a later agenda item for your consideration of the lease of the Camden Battlefield, not the Battle Site or Battle River Park. It's Camden Battlefield for the 900 acres that will eventually be there. I'm with the South Carolina Battleground Trust, which will be the county's partner in interpretation, in infrastructure, in management of the park, and it's really exciting. So what I want you to remember is this is the South Carolina Revolutionary flag, one of them, and it spells Liberty, which is freedom coupled with responsibility. And Liberty has these three words, the letters in them. E stands for economic development. More people spend more money in Kershaw County looking at historic properties or traditional than other places, twice as much. The R in Liberty stands for recreational. We want people to walk their dogs, walk their wives, walk around a battlefield, look at the stars in the early evening. It's recreational source for a battlefield. And then finally, the T stands for tourism. We are the same size as Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, 7,800 people, the city, the city. We get 35,000 to 45,000 visitors a year. Gettysburg gets 2 million people because of the battlefield, although anything works at Gettysburg when it gets 2 million people through it. So keep that in mind, economic development, recreation, and tourism as you consider this resolution this evening. And I encourage you to accept that resolution because the South Carolina Battleground Preservation Trust, as you already know, all of you know, we're already working out there to put in some of the infrastructure, and it is part of the Liberty Trail. So you know, the motto has been simply revolutionary? Well, there's nothing simple about a revolution. But what we encourage you is to become revolutionary, be revolutionary. And you're taking over this lease of the battlefield of Camden will have a great economic benefit to the county of Kershaw County. And I wanted to leave, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, a copy of where it fits into the Liberty Trail for each one of the commissioners, as well as one of the cards of the general who gave his life Baron de Cobb there, and that's the kind of thing we're putting out. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you very much indeed. That was terrific. Huzzah. Now with that, we move--
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. On behalf of the South Carolina Battleground Trust, we'd like to give this Liberty flag of South Carolina to Vic Carpenter, and he will fly it in that county way up here.
Very good, sir. Thank you. With that, we moved-- any more public comments, Mr. DeBose? No more comments. Okay, we move to adoption of the agenda. We're going to look for an amendment to move the Lugoff Fire Department to item number one under New Business, and Mr. Tucker will look for an amendment to add a resolution immediately after the Recreation Master Plan. Can we have such a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda to add a proclamation recognizing Mr. Vic Carpenter into, be inserted into New Business after Recreation Master Plan.
Okay, can we have a second?
Second.
That was Mr. Brazel. Any discussion? Okay, none needed. Let's move to a vote, and then we'll get the Second Amendment. All those in favor signify, and it's unanimous. And do we have another amendment to move the Lugoff Fire Department?
At the picks--
Uh, Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Tucker, discussion? Only, I would say again, that was at the request of the chief, saying that he would like to brief us officially, and then we'll move on to subsequent discussion about that. With that, let's move to a motion to approve. All those in favor signify, and it's unanimous. And can we have a motion to approve the two amendments?
Make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Uh, first, from Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
From Mr. Gardner, and no discussion necessary. Let's move quickly to a vote. All those in favor signify, and the agenda is amended. We'll move now to approval of minutes with Mr. Tucker absent. Can we have a motion to approve? It's at page 12. It's at tab B, and it's up on the screen.
So move.
Uh, Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
From Mr. Brazel, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, once again, I will be abstaining from my absence.
Very good, and notice, this was where we did our first reading, title only, of the budget. With that, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify, and it's unanimous with Mr. Tucker abstaining. We move now to a resolution, item number one. It's at tab C. It's page 16. If you'll move up there. A resolution directing Kershaw County Planning Commission to conduct studies required for the consideration of a local government development impact fee for South Carolina, under the South Carolina law. Uh, Mr. Carpenter, as usual, you need to explain what we have here.
Mr. Chairman, members of councils, you recall the council's directed staff to begin the process of doing the research necessary to provide the county council the information they would need to determine if or not they would impose an impact fee. State law requires that a resolution then from the council be issued to direct the planning commission to start that study. So you have in front of you tonight that resolution that would direct the Kershaw County Planning Commission to engage in a study, which will be, the results will be returned ultimately to the county council for consideration and discussion.
Okay, I'll read the resolution and ask for motion. Resolution and title is already outlined. Whereas Kershaw County, a body politic and political subdivision of the state of South Carolina, has adopted a comprehensive plan as provided in chapter 29 of South Carolina Code, whereas Kershaw County, by and through its county council, is authorized by the South Carolina Development Impact Fee Act to initiate a process whereby Kershaw County Planning Commission, the commission, may conduct studies and recommend an impact fee ordinance developed in accordance with the requirements of a title and chapter under the South Carolina Code. Whereas the county finds the geographic area of unincorporated Kershaw County has experienced and continues to experience rapid growth and development, which will continue into the near future due to vested but yet unbilled development approvals, as well as other future development. Whereas the county continues to experience direct impacts of this growth and on the demand for public facilities. And whereas the costs associated with land acquisition, construction, and equipping of public facilities necessitated by anticipated growth and development are significant and expensive, and whereas the county may wish for future residential and non-residential development in unincorporated Kershaw County to fund new public facilities eligible for impact fee funding in part through a proportionate share of an impact fee as may be permitted by the South Carolina Act. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Kershaw County Council duly assembled that the commission is hereby directed to conduct the required studies and provide a recommendation to Kershaw County Council as to whether to establish a development impact fee ordinance in conformity with South Carolina Code. And as Kershaw County Planning and Zoning Director are as designated, shall act as liaison with any consultants or county personnel who may have been tasked to date or who may be tasked in the future to assist in the performance of requirements incident to the study and recommendations of whether to establish a developmental impact fee, including but not limited to the performance of any required review, analysis, and study, the generation of any required plans and reports, and the structuring of the recommended ordinance. It is the intent of council that the commission shall complete its assigned task with a recommendation within four months or as soon as possible thereafter. The county administrator and all other appropriate officials and employees are hereby authorized to execute, deliver, and receive any agreements and documents and perform such tasks as may be required by the county or commission in order to carry out, give effect to, and consummate the study and recommendation of the development of an impact fee ordinance. This resolution shall be construed and interpreted in accordance with the laws of the state. This resolution shall become effective immediately and upon approval by the council, and the provisions of this resolution is hereby declared to be severable, and if any section, phrase, or provision shall be, for any reason, be declared by a court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid or unenforceable, that declaration shall not affect the validity of the remainder. A copy of this resolution shall be delivered. Now with that, can we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion that we approve, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
From Mr. Gardner, I would just say that it's been the will of the council to do this and as recommended by the ad hoc committee led by Mr. Connel and Mr. Brazel and Mr. Gardner. With that, I open for discussion. Who had the first on that? Mr. Tucker?
I just want to say that I appreciate my colleagues' support and, of course, Vic and staff of getting this done along with the planning commission. This would, you know, allow us to see where we're at on trying to make sure that we develop Kershaw County in a responsible way as this growth continues to attack us from the West. So I appreciate all of you guys who are supporting this.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just for the public's benefit, I would say that this is a statutory requirement, the study, so unless it gets done, we can't actually consider an impact fee as a solution or tool in addressing some of the growth issues in Kershaw County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments?
If I may--
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Some clarification to the-- so the ad hoc committee appointed by the chairman recommended this for us to pass tonight, correct?
Yes, yes. And we also, too, Jimmy, as you may recall, we voted on this during the run-up to this. Go ahead.
Let me ask another question. How is the impact fee going to help us with growth?
That--
Anybody?
I mean, an impact fee in and of itself is not or should not be looked as a tool to manage growth.
But we made reference to that on this county council just now.
What an impact fee does is it addresses some of the consequences of growth.
I understand, but it was made reference to help us control the growth.
I mean, there--
And I'm just asking--
It's one of many twos. Mr. Jones, I made the statement, so let me answer it. It's one of many twos that we can use, and this is not really coming from the ad hoc committee. This is a part of what we assign the administrator and staff to do. As Ben just stated, this is part of the state law that we have to do to get to the next point. So that's why it's before us. Without doing this, then we can't ever start the study.
No, thank you, Mr. Tucker.
You're welcome, Mr. Jones.
Let me just ask a couple. I just need some clarification, and sometimes it may take me a little bit longer to understand this, some of you up here. You know, we're in some pretty tough times now, and a lot of people have been hurting with the inflation, the cost of gasoline, the cost of food. To me, an impact fee, I don't know how it's going to help at all with any type of growth that we have totally lost control of here, which I think we're all working hard to try to get under control. But I think this is a kind of a little bit of a snap to judgment to do this this quick. You know, the impact fee, in my understanding, will be passed on to the consumer. Am I correct on that?
It's charged to the builder of the house.
But the builder of the house is going to charge it to the--
It's up to the builder how he manages it, but I mean--
But I mean, usually that's what happens.
They would do that.
How much of an impact fee are we even thinking about?
Mr. Jones, that's what the study would determine, is what are the needs of the county? So the study would be divided into sections on recreation, on public safety, on various areas they would study to determine what the impact of growth would be, and then what the costs would therefore be to provide the necessary facilities. If an impact fee were-- all this is is the study. It's not anything more than a study. If the study's completed and the county council chose to impose these based on the study, the fees could only be spent on hard capital items related specifically to those areas that were covered. So it would, and another aspect of the law is that impact fees, when collected, must be spent within three years of collecting. So an impact fee, if it were to be approved by the county council, could only be spent on brick and mortar structures that serve those areas of the county that were covered by the study and could not be used for operations. They could not be used for long-term spending. It could only be used for-- it could only be used for fairly quick expenses like ball fields, fire stations, EMS stations, things like that.
You know, it's always good to say ball fields, EMS stations, you know, things like that, because that pulls at the heartstrings of all the citizens, but here's where I have a problem. I'm not comfortable with this impact fee study. I think we need to slow down, look at it a little bit more. I wish that the ad hoc committee could have came with something else other than recommending this. If this is the best we can do to try to say we're grabbing some kind of control of our growth, which we really can't control, and we probably never could, I think we're in for a long, hard road. But, so we pass this tonight, it's going to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
The study would be conducted that would go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they would get the results of the study first.
You'd, how much, but would you hire somebody to do the study?
Yes, sir.
How much?
You're talking several tens of thousands of dollars, probably.
Several tens of thousands.
Maybe twenty thousand.
Let me ask a question or two, if Mr. Jones has finished.
Well, I'm not finished, but I'll yield to you to go ahead.
Okay, you sure?
Yeah, absolutely.
So the biggest concern I've had about any kind of an impact fee is how it would impact small builders and personal homeowners. Have we made any kind of clarity to the folks that we're going to pay to do the study, that there's a concern?
The people who do a study like this are, they're going to return to you the results of what they have determined the impact would be. So it's up to the county council to decide if you're going to impose it or not. You know, so they've got to follow the law too, you know, the law that was written by the General Assembly governing impact fees is pretty specific what the study has to cover. So the study covers those things the law requires it to do, which is if you add X number of people, what does that going to result in in demand on services? And then that demand on services, how would you pay for the necessary capital costs related to those demands on services? So that's all their study's going to do, is say if we add a thousand people in the next five years, this is what the impact will be, this is what it would cost for to build fire stations, EMS stations, whatever, whatever the category is, and then it'll come back ultimately to the planning commission, the county council, to decide if they felt... You cannot impose a fee greater than what is required, you don't have to impose that, you can impose the lower fee if you wish to as well. So it sets those parameters of the ceiling that a fee could be, and the categories that you could spend the fee on. But anything beyond that is up to the decision of the county council. But fees by their nature have to hit everybody, so the concern of a fee only...
You've answered my question, thank you. If they have to hit everybody, I can't support it either.
Mr. Chairman, one other caveat, the impact fee does not necessarily have to be for all of Kershaw County. In fact, most impact fees only are for the areas impacted.
But we're not saying that.
But...
We're not saying that.
Oh, no you're not, but I mean, you don't know whether they're going to come back. Typically, it would not be the whole county.
It's not, if I might, Mr. Chairman...
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Jones will yield?
I will, absolutely.
It's not the time to say that right now.
No, it's not.
Yeah, because the study has to be done first.
Correct.
So the study will tell us whether we can even put one in.
And where?
And where, if it's even possible, and then it becomes a tool you can use. Mr. Jones, to answer one of your earlier questions, I'm a little bit slower sometimes too, and I have to look through the numbers a lot, but one of the things that's been useful for me to consider when I think of the phrase addressing growth is, to me that means two things, you have to pay for growth if you're going to address it, and then you have to reduce the speed in some way to something that's manageable. And this is one of the ones I think helps you pay for growth more directly. What I was interested in knowing, like Mr. Brazel's concern, is can it be implemented, say it comes back where it is a tool that we can use in certain areas of the county, can it be implemented for only subdivisions that are considered major of a certain number, or does it have to be every single house in a particular area? Do we have any idea on that, Mr. DeBeau's or Mr. Carpenter?
You can put limits to what you are looking to cover, but again, you can't, if you impose a fee on one category or class of people, you have to impose it on everybody. So you can do a territorial, so it could only be, for example, in this particular part of the county. But if the fee is a thousand dollars a house, then it's going to be a thousand dollars for every new house that's constructed, not existing homes, but new homes that are constructed. So whatever the fee is determined to be, you can control the shape of it, but you can't control how much it is, or who's impacted within that territory.
So is it possible to define large tracts that are highly likely to be...
You can't...
Like, what do you mean by an area can be defined?
You could do a geographic area, like, you know, West Waterbury bounded by the Waterbury River, I-20, things like that, or you could do pre, you know, zoning categories, you know, zoning tracks, things like that. So you can have specific territory that is covered by the study, but again, within that territory, you can't have different classes of people.
Okay, well, one of the issues with growth is it outstrips its ability to pay for itself, and so this seems like it's one of the tools that we could consider for paying for growth. So I would support getting the study done, and then we'll see what the results are as to whether or not we can use it in Kershaw County wisely.
If I may.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
You know, we talk about to sustain growth, you know, when we have growth, it's a double-edged sword, the value of our mileage goes up, and I think there's no finer example of that than the Lookout Fire Department, when they came to us one year, and I don't know if it was Chief Spencer or Chief Ray that said, "We're not going to have to ask you for an increase tonight because the growth has increased our mileage to where we have more revenue." And so, I mean, that in itself also generates revenue. I just think personally, guys, and I got to go with my heart, I got to go with my gut, and I just think this resolution's too open-ended. I think it's just not confined enough for me. Mr. Carpenter, who put this on the agenda?
Our county council asked me to...
County council?
Yes, a vote was taken, but the council asked me to do this.
Okay, well, anyway...
I've returned it to the county council as you requested.
We asked you to get a resolution together.
No, I, state law requires if there's going to be an impact study, there has to be this resolution.
I understand, but...
So if there's, I mean, I was asked to begin the process, this is the first legal step of the process the council has to do.
Well, certainly I certainly want you to look into everything like I did with the land use ordinance, to make it more user-friendly to the citizens, and get somebody running, planning, and zoning that can relate to our citizens, and not make them feel like they're a burden on them when they come in there, and that has happened many, 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 many times. And I think your new appointee is doing a great job so far, and I'm very appreciative of that. You know, we had, we work for the citizens, you know, to me, we shouldn't be rude or be, you know, complacent with them, and that has happened, and that's going to stop, and I think we've all indicated that about what we've been doing. But going back to the resolution, I don't think we asked you to bring us a resolution, we may have asked you to look into the situation, am I correct?
I don't have the exact wording in front of me, Mr. Jones, but I was completely of the guidance that the county council wanted me to begin the process of doing a study, and this is the first step of the study, a study doesn't commit anything to happen.
Well, it was mentioned that the wonderful job of the twenty-four-person ad hoc committee recommended this.
Let me just, Jimmy, let's make sure we go back to that, I think that question's been answered by Mr. Tucker. Mr. Tucker, can you answer that question?
Yes, sir, we voted, majority of council up here voted to have the impact fee study done by Mr. Carpenter and staff, and as I stated earlier, this is part of the process. Now, whether we take that study and do nothing with it, or do something, this is part of what we've already authorized him to bring back to council, so we can know these questions that we're asking up here, which are many, and get answers, and then we will decide as a body whether we move forward with the study or without the study. So I'm getting confused on why is this so hard, because we've asked staff to do something, and they brought it back, and maybe everybody don't agree with it, but it wasn't a unanimous vote when we gave him the authority to bring this back to us, so...
If I may finish?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Well, I just don't remember asking him to go bring us, no pun intended, a resolution that's going to cost us tens of, several of thousands of dollars, that's open-ended and it's hard, I think it's wide open, anything can happen. You know, it takes me back to when I was sitting on council with you, Mr. Tucker, back in 2007, when we were discussing a special purpose district, I asked a question, "Are y'all going to do a tax?" "No, no, 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 we're not going to do a tax, we're just going to have it there in case we need it." Well, I knew better than that. Anyway, we had a tax within three months after the adoption of it. Now, it is related to what we're doing here tonight, there's no doubt in my mind that this is the first step to go ahead and automatically do an impact fee, impact fee, I know y'all say no, but that's just my belief, and I'm not upset, I'm not angry with anybody, I'm trying to be as nice as I can, as humble as I can be, to where, you know, you don't take these questions personally, but I'm going to ask the questions, and I'm going to stick to what I think is right, and I think when we've just been through what we've been through, everybody's not as fortunate as some folks who have businesses that do very well, some people have really struggled the last couple of years, really struggled. And I think that any kind of fee at this moment, especially when it's not going to control growth, it's not going to help us with the growth, if we say it is, that is a misgiven in my book. Anyway, I'm done with that, we can move on, or if somebody else can try...
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Gardner, go ahead.
Yeah, and Mr. Jones, I don't necessarily like impact fees either, but it's a tool, and that's what we were looking at on the ad hoc committee, tools that could help not necessarily control growth, although we were looked at a number of those things too, but what an impact fee will do, as Mr. Conell said, it will help pay for some of those things, because we all know where the growth is, it's in West Waterbury, but when that growth occurs, and I don't know if we can control it either, I agree with you, I'm not sure, we have a tool that could control it, other than some of our zoning and not rezone some properties, but when that growth occurs and we have to build a new EMS station, a new fire station, new ball fields, or public works, whatever we have out there, and that cost goes up, that cost goes to the entire county. So you're going, because these impact fees would help cover those costs, we're not going to be raising taxes on people in Bethune because of the growth in West Waterbury. So I think that's what an impact fee would do, it would help pay for those things, the brick and mortar things that come with growth. So I don't know that it's the answer, but it would offset those costs where taxes would not go up, because you know when growth comes, services go up. So I just think that we need to look at the study and then determine, and we'll determine what the impact fee will be, or whether we'll have one or not, so I'll support the study.
Mr. Snodgrass, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just kind of add, a lot of good questions here tonight, but I feel like we're asking questions that need to be asked after this study comes back, we're making stances and we're getting on our soapboxes about where we stay on impact fees, and that's all well and good, but from what I see, I think this is an ability for us to kind of put all the ideas on the table, kind of pull out all the toolboxes and see, okay, what tools can we use is at our disposal to manage growth, and probably manage is probably the best word, we talk about growth, I think growth is coming, and so I think when you use the word control growth, probably talking about managing growth, so growth is going to happen, but how do we manage it in such a way that it doesn't impede our ability for public safety to provide recreation opportunities and things of that nature? So I'm going to support this tonight, only because this is just the first step to pull the toolboxes out of the garage and see, okay, what can we do? And then the next, after the study comes back, then that's the appropriate time to really ask a lot of the questions and get into a lot of the debate that we've gotten into this evening, so I'll support this, just so, because the last four years that I've been on council, we've been in work sessions, and impact fees always come up, and we always ask questions, and the administrator always says, "Well, that's something that we'll find out in the study." Well, that's something that we got to do a study first, and then we can find that out. So there's a lot of questions that we all have, but from what I understand, we've got to get that study first, so that we can fully understand how that will impact. This study may come back, and we may realize, well, it's not a good tool for Kershaw County, but we first got to at least take a look at it, so.
Yeah, I would make a ruling here as the chairman, we did indeed vote to ask Mr. Carpenter to do this, so it wasn't...
Not to do the resolution, sir.
Oh, yeah, to have the resolution come in.
No, we did not.
Excuse me, Mr. Jones, I didn't recognize you there.
Well, quit telling something that's not true.
But the point here is, is we voted as a council to ask him to bring in the resolution, and so now we have a resolution in front of us, and I'm ready to call the question unless there's a closing argument here. Anybody got any further points? Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it sounds like we already got the money spent, thank you.
Okay, with that, we move to a vote, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Mr. Snodgrass, Mr., excuse me, I got a bad call.
That's okay, Tucker.
Mr. Tucker, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Burns, Mr. Brazel, and Mr. Conell. Those opposed, Mr. Jones, and the motion passes, let's proceed with that.
Mr. Tucker, thank you for your clarification, I do look forward to seeing what it reveals.
Yes, sir.
Although I may not be in favor of it, I do look to...
And I totally respect you.
Let me just close that discussion, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item number two is under resolutions, a resolution by the county authorizing the execution of a recreational lease for the historic battlefield site with the Camden, Historic Camden Foundation, it's at Tab D, it's at Page eighteen in your electronic book, let me turn to that, and I'll read it, and we'll follow the same procedure, gentlemen, also for your information, a map is on Page twenty in the electronic book. Okay, I'll read it. An enabling resolution by the Kershaw County Council authorizing the execution of a recreational lease for the historic battlefield with Historic Camden Foundation, whereas the foundation hereafter named HCF is organized and operates for charitable and educational purposes within the meaning of the Internal Revenue Code, and whereas the purpose of HCF, Historic Camden Foundation, is the acquisition, protection, publication, preservation, and restoration for historical, educational, cultural, and recreational purposes of the area of historical importance, including the site of Historic Camden and all historic data and artifacts, structures pertaining to its museum functions, as well as operate and maintain the Camden Battlefield and the Longleaf Pine Preserve. Whereas it is empowered to accept gifts and public appropriations and to cooperate and contract with the public and private agencies and individuals for those purposes, whereas it is the owner of four hundred and seventy-six acres, more or less, located on Flat Rock Road, which is known as the Camden Battlefield, and Longleaf Pine Preserve, where the Revolutionary War Battle of Camden took place, and whereas Kershaw County is a body politic and corporate and a political subdivision of the state of South Carolina, whereas the county council is a duly constituted governing body, and whereas Kershaw County wants to partner with HCF and utilize the county's resources to establish a battlefield site to be maintained and marketed for recreational, educational purposes, with said activities to include, but by not limited to, the creation, operation of a battlefield site, include trails, signage, interpretation panels, monuments, parking, restroom facilities, merchandising facilities, and preservation activities in conjunction and consultation with Historic Camden and its historic preservation partners and stakeholders, including the American Battlefield Trust, the South Carolina Battleground Preservation Trust, Palmetto Conservation Foundation, and the Catawba Valley Land Trust, whereas Kershaw County and HCF desire to enter into a recreational lease for the historic battlefield, heretofore as Exhibit A, which I say is Page twenty, and incorporated herein in order to establish a battlefield site pursuant to the terms therein, whereas the establishment, operation, and maintenance of a battlefield site is a benefit to the citizens of Kershaw County and the public purpose. Now therefore be it resolved, the county council approves and ratifies the terms and conditions of the recreational lease to the limitations of availability of funds in the Kershaw County operating in capital budget, county council appropriations, and the expenditure of said funds. Authorizes and directs the chair of Kershaw County Council and/or the administrator to take whatever further actions and execute whatever further documents, including the recreational lease, and reasonably necessary prudent to effectuate the intent of this resolution, and authorizes and directs the administrator to take all reasonable... resolution, and authorizes and directs the administrator to take all reasonable, reasonably necessary actions to establish, maintain, and operate the battlefield site in concurrence with the terms of this resolution, et cetera. With that, can we have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Snodgrass, a second.
Second.
Of Mr. Gardner, a discussion. Mr. Snodgrass.
Thank you. I've been looking forward to this for quite some time now, I know there's been conversation about this, and I think it's a neat opportunity for us as council to take a part in continuing to preserve just the rich history that is here in Kershaw County. I'm not going to say our history books were wrong, but they didn't always tell the total perspective of the Revolutionary War and the Southern Campaign, the role that the Southern Campaign played in the Revolutionary War. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to tap into tourism, historical tourism. This is something of interest. We have a great story to tell, and I love how Mr. Ruer always, you know, says that the birth certificate of the country may be Lexington Concord, but the labor delivery room was right here in South Carolina. And I love being able to be a part of telling that story. Thank you.
A second, Mr. Gardner.
I think this is a really good thing. The only question I have, what would the county's cost be pertaining to this? Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Carpenter, we would maintain the property, so cutting grass, things like that. With resources we have, we've already put one ranger on the staff, you recall, about a year and a half ago, and so there would be incidental costs to maintaining it. The American Battlefield Trust, South Carolina Battlefield Trust, I should say, is investing in preparing the site, building facilities there. They have fundraised, private funds come in, and so they'll be investing a significant amount of money into the property. Thank you.
So this is a no-cost lease?
No, we, correct, we are not paying anything for this lease.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments?
If I may.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Did Mr. Ruer leave? I have something I want to say to him.
He's not here.
Okay, well, it was good. I think he does a great job. I appreciate what he does, and I've known David for many, many, many years, and he's very passionate. I have members of my family that are also very passionate about the same thing, and this is a great opportunity for us. And Mr. Carpenter, the way this is written, you will be in control of making sure that it's administered, correct?
Yes, sir.
With no interference from up here?
It is the administrator, because it would be an operational issue.
Correct. But, okay, I just want to make sure we have no, where members of council can kind of get involved and try to make it a little bit more complicated for you.
This would fall under Parks and Rec, and it'd be part of our.
We need to stay out of your business unless we have business with you. Thank you.
Other comments?
Wait a minute, I'm not through.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I just want to say, thank you, Vic. You've done a good job. Appreciate it. I didn't mean to sound rude, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments? I fully support this, it's a great idea. This is an amazing opportunity for us to help others tell our story by the simple maintenance of a very valuable piece of property, and their bodies still buried on that ground. They were sacred blood lost in the Revolutionary War that we're still finding. So with that, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Huzzah. All right. Okay, we move now to a series of ordinances, third reading of an ordinance to amend the Kershaw County Unified Code of Zoning and Land Development Regulations. It's at tab E on the board, it's at page 82 in your electronics, if you want to turn all the way back there. Mr. Carpenter, can you explain what we have here? We'll move into.
The chairman member of council you have in front of you tonight on third reading in ordinance that would amend the Kershaw County Code of Zoning and Land Development, the ZLDR articles, modify the process for the right to appeal. Council has previously had this and approved it on the previous two votes.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion that we approve, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, a second.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Gardner, discussion. Mr. Tucker?
I'm sorry. No, I just want to tell Vic and staff again, thank you for working on these issues that we're trying to get straight in our planning and zoning department, so we can better and be more consistent when it comes down to people, you know, requesting different zonings and knowing what our policies and rules are, and everything's consistent and coincide. So, thank you.
A second, please.
I just agree with Mr. Tucker. Anything that would make that department run easier, I think that's good.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Conell.
One of the most useful aspects, I think, of this particular change lands appeals in front of us, as opposed to a corridor or some other body that would make a decision on it, so they come before us. I really appreciate that.
Good. Other comments?
If I may.
Now, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Carpenter, when I asked you to, and council supported to put this on the agenda and go to work on it, I think Mr. Brazel and I did, actually. Exactly what does this do to help? I want to put it on the record for the third reading, what does this do to help ease the burden of the citizens when they go to planning and zoning?
As Mr. Conell said, in the appeal process, it puts the county council in the, as the arbiter for the appeals. Previously, it would go to a court, so it makes it easier, simpler, and obviously less expensive for someone who does not agree with the decision of the staff or the Board of Zoning Appeals. So it gives the county council a role to play they did not have.
Thank you.
Other comments? Uh, Mrs. Snodgrass.
Sorry. Mr. Carpenter, so the zoning board of appeals, does that still have a place in our?
Yes, sir. It would still, any appeals would go from staff to the BCA. That would still be the same.
Okay, and if someone didn't like what the Board of Appeals decided, then we would be the secondary Board of Appeals?
Instead of going to Circuit Court. Is that right?
No, I'm talking about Planning and Zoning Commission.
But if an appeal were to go past that before this, it would have had to have gone to Circuit Court. Is that correct?
Well, there's a statute that requires that.
Yep. Circuit Court is always the final arbiter of everything. That still remains. They can still, but it puts county council in the process that were not in the process.
Just one step ahead of Circuit Court.
Yep.
So clarify, simple terms?
It gives county council the ability to overturn decisions.
Thank you.
I appreciate that very much.
Good points. Thank you. And that does not end what we have begun back in January and February with the rewrite of the comp plan and the zoning laws that we have, and that should have begun already. All right, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. Thank you very much, Vic. It was a long process, well concluded. With that, we move to item number two in the ordinances, it's on page 84 in your electronic book, tab F, it's up on the screen. Third reading of an ordinance acting in establishing a special property tax assessment program for rehabilitated historic property. We seem to be having a theme about history. It's known as the Bailey Bill. Mr. Carpenter, can you bring us on board?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you tonight for third reading, the bill that is referred to normally as the Bailey Bill. Council has previously approved this on to previous readings.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Conell, a second. Mr. Chairman, could I ask Mr. Conell, as part of his motion, to include the IGA, which is attached to it in a part of the ordinance? Would it be approved also?
Yeah, I was including that in my motion already.
Thank you. Make it part of the minutes, so.
Yes, sir.
And that's it. The IGA is in your electronic package right behind this. The document is 84, and the IGA is page 93. Okay, can we have a second?
Second.
All right, very good. Mr. Conell, lead us off.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Council, we've talked about this multiple times. The delay or time that's passed since last time we spoke about it on a second reading involved reaching an IGA with City of Camden. You have to have a reviewing authority under the statute. It could be the State Archives, but we were not suspect, but a little curious about how that would exactly work and how responsive they would be. Based on Mr. Carpenter and Mr. DeBose's advice and counsel, it looks like we may have found a better solution with City of Camden. They process these fairly regularly, not a huge number, but they process them regularly, and they have a Mr. Putnam, is that right, on staff, who is certified and educated in these matters? He's able to go through and provide the certification that's required to pass on the Bailey Bill. So the settlement points for me under this ordinance for our consideration, City of Camden would be the approved reviewing authority. We're talking about properties that are 50 years old or older, have some historic significance, and county council can actually designate those properties as one of the criteria. The minimum investment requirement is 20% of the market value at the time, it can be much more, but it can't be less than that to be eligible for this. The time period is 15 years for the tax benefit. And again, the result is if you are qualifying property and you get approved, your tax rate, the real property tax rate gets frozen at that pre-investment rate. So if it's some low rate that you would have on a property that was decrepit, yet historic, and you wanted to improve it and make this historic property beautiful again and turn it into something that's great for the community, maybe open a business even, if it's open to the public, you could have your property tax rate frozen at that low rate for 15 years, significant savings over a long period of time. So I think this is a good idea. I think we've gone through all the hoops we needed to, Mr. DeBose, to make sure we had the right reviewing authority. And as I understand it, City of Camden is not charging any fee this first fiscal year, and they may not in the future, they just want to see what the volume is. Is that right?
Yes, they're not charging any because they don't think the volume's going to merit it. And they think they have enough staff in place already, including their landmark commission to review them, so they're not charging a fee.
So the city's working with us on this?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Conell, be real clear, your motion is to approve it as amended with the IGA.
Correct.
That is an amendment.
That's correct.
Other comments?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Let's talk about some facts. I voted against this the first two times. Y'all remember that? Remember. Anyway, I voted against the first two times, of course, after getting with Ben Conell and Mr. Carpenter, I felt like I was not happy about the deep hole over in Columbia that this would fall into, because, one, they didn't want it in Columbia, but of course, they would have been mandated to do it. So I mentioned to Mr. Conell, after talking with Mr. Carpenter, why don't we try to get the City of Camden to use their reviewing process? So asking questions delayed this. I did that. Asking questions got it the right way. Now, I'm very happy with that. I'd be able to support this tonight. I want to thank Mr. Conell and Mr. Brazel for their hard work in it, as far as, you know, understanding that I wanted it postponed, and I had asked y'all to go to the city to see if we could work out a deal with them, because they're already set up. Did I not, Mr. Carpenter? Yeah?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. But anyway, that wasn't mentioned tonight. But anyway, Mr. Conell, thank you so much for everything you've done on this, and Mr. Brazel, you as well. I will be supporting this tonight, because now it makes sense. If I hadn't have done what I did, it would have been voted on two months ago, bam, bam, bam. Would be dealing with the State Archives over there, and it'd be nothing but a big old hole that falls into nothing. And you know, folks, I'm not being ugly, I'm just being factual. This is the truth. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Please, sir, Mr. Sir.
Ben, thank you so much for pushing on this. It's something that's been near to dear to me for a couple of years now, and so thankful to have that. And quite honestly, I was, I knew from the very beginning, City of Camden was going to be a key player, a player in this, and so I'm excited that we can finally, finally get this moving, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you're on top of it, sir.
Okay, no further comments? I would like to make sure that once, this is if it's passed, and once it is passed, we have some sort of notice out to landowners and figure out a way to publicize this, so they know the procedure, and perhaps we use Lauren or somebody like that, so they know it's happened, more than just relying on the newspaper and the radio.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
If I could, on that point, very important, I forgot to mention, for anybody that's thinking of taking advantage of this opportunity in freezing a tax rate for an extended period of time, you have to be an approved, except for certain properties that are kind of like grandfathered right now that haven't been reassessed, because this is the first time you're passing it, you have to be approved beforehand, because they want to have certain historical markers and requirements in place, because sometimes they need to know what's going on behind the walls. So if somebody goes in and thinks, I'm going to get three months of work done, and then Cheet Rock's up, and it hasn't been restored in a particular way, you may not be eligible. So you got to have the reviewing authority on the front end to say, yeah, this qualifies, go ahead, you know, alter the races and get your project done, and you get to freeze your tax rate.
Yeah, and in addition to this press release, we need to address one question, that properties that qualify already with the city, are they grandfathered in for this provision with the county? Mr. DeBose?
If profit's already been assessed, that's the key word. If it's already gone on the books as assessed, then it will not qualify.
Okay, and I think we'll just need to have a good press release that covers some of these things with the appropriate references back to the staff and so on, okay?
Well, I hope you use some other newspapers instead of just the Camden.
Mr. Jones, we will, yeah, we will figure out a way. With that, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. Thank you very much, gentlemen. That's a good piece of work and good cross talk. We move now to another item that requires you to go away for a while.
And I will recuse myself.
Mr. Brazel. Item number three is a third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee agreement binding between Kershaw County and the RJR Land Group. It's at tab G, it's on the screen, it's on page 95. And with that, Mr. Carpenter, open it up.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you know, for a number of years, the county has been working with a local company, Roy's Wood Products, to support their expansion. We are now at third reading of a fee and lieu agreement between the county and the company. I believe Mr. DeBose has a slight amendment that he would like to make to this ordinance that has been discussed with the company, and it is at their request.
Do you want to make that apart after we get it motioned, or do it?
Well, Mr. Chairman, yeah, the approval can have to be by an amended motion. Motion on third reading will have to amend the motion on second reading, because this ordinance contains affiliates, which would not only be the new facility, but would be the existing facility. So this covers the new facility, which is a property on 601 that the county, where Fairfield conveyed to them through the county, but would also include their existing facility, where previously it did not include the existing facility. So a motion to amend in conformity with the documents.
Okay, so let's get it on the table first, and then we'll make a motion to amend, and you'll have to help us with that language. With that, let's move to a motion to approve as written, and then we'll get to the amendment. Can we have a motion?
Motion.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Snodgrass, a second for Mr. Conell. Okay, now, Mr., it's on the table. Tell us how to amend this, Dr.
Now, a motion needs to be made to amend the ordinance in accordance with the ordinance and the fee and lieu of tax agreement in the agenda package, which includes sponsor affiliates. The sponsor affiliate is the existing facility.
Okay, well, that's a long, that's a mouthful. So I think we'll restate it as amended to include affiliates. How's that? Happy with that language?
And in accordance with the documents in the agenda package.
All right, can we have such a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we amend the original ordinance to include affiliates as well as other language that our illustrious county legal staff has described as well.
Okay, we don't have to agree with illustrious. Can we have a second? Can we have a second?
Second.
Is that you, Sammy?
Yes.
Okay, with that, discussion. Mr. DeBose, you started this.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, as I stated, the document in the agenda package mentions sponsor affiliates, well, sponsored affiliates, so just corporations or organizations owned by the same people that own RJR, which is, as you pointed out, I believe Roy's Wood Products, the same owners. So it includes the new facility and the existing facility, and the existing facility is owned by a different entity. I can get you the name of it, but it's spelled in the, let's see.
The Two Tiger Property?
Yes, Two Tiger Property.
Yeah, Two Tiger. Okay, good. All right, very good. Other discussion?
And the new facility, or the old facility anticipates improvements that would comply with the filo as well.
Yes, under the new ordinance.
Yeah, so that is one of the key points, I think, and I wanted to draw that out. The other thing I was going to mention, Mr. Chairman, is that the due diligence was done on this prior to Mr. Brazel coming on council. I remember whenever we were talking about it, we were like, man, it's great to be able to consider this option for a local, multi-generational family business, and so I'm just glad it's coming to fruition. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Other comments?
If I may.
Yeah, Mr. Jones?
Clarification. One, let me just say this. This is a remarkable family, third-generation business. I mean, I've supported this from the very beginning. And I want to make it clear to any and everybody out there, Russell Brazel had nothing to do with this. This was done prior to him even getting on county council. I'm just proud that we have a family like this that will bring something before us, you know, and that's going to move forward and grow in Kershaw County. Now, having said that, you said new ordinance.
The same ordinance. You were just amending it.
The amendment is not making a new ordinance. We're just.
Mending the other ordinance to include the Two Tigers Properties LLC and the existing facilities.
Which has been done before. Which has been done before.
Yes.
Yes. And I just want to make sure we have that on the record. So if anybody is concerned about it, give me a call, and I'll help you understand it. This family has been a stand-up family. And just because one of the members had to be on county council has nothing to do with it. He's had no involvement in it whatsoever. So anyway, I support this wholeheartedly.
Other comments? Third-generation family. The founder was a World War II veteran.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Tucker.
I would like to just recognize Mr. Tony Brazel. If the Brazel family has anything that they want to add or say.
I just want to thank the council for considering this.
Bring the mic up, please, Tony.
Thank you for considering this, and we look forward to investing in the county and in the people of the county by producing an even better place for them to work. And y'all's efforts here will enable us to do that, and that's what we intend to do. And we have increased our investment from $2.5 million to $5 million minimum.
Tony, how many employees do y'all have?
I think we're floating around 83, 84.
83, 84 jobs.
And I think we've increased that by about 30-plus in the last five years.
Wow.
Good for you.
Yeah, because the last time I asked your dad, it was at 59. That was a couple of years ago. So you've grown.
Yes, sir.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Terrific.
Are there any questions of me?
I don't think we do.
Go get them.
Thanks, guys.
All right. With that, I call the question. Let's move to a vote. All those in favor, so signify. And it's unanimous. Would you ask Russell to come back in and pass this? With Russell not a member. The next item is item number four. If you're in your electronic books, it's the second reading of an ordinance to provide budget appropriations. It's in your electronic book. It says part two. And we're going to go through four parts tonight. It's in part two on page one. And adopt and implement the charge and collection and service and rates and fees for other tax purposes for the period of fiscal year beginning 1 July '22 and ending 30 June '23. Mr. Carpenter, can you introduce the budget?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you tonight for second reading the 2223 Kershaw County budget. I have a presentation prepared for when council places it on the floor.
All right. So we'll make a motion, and we'll ask Mr. Carpenter to speak. All right? So with all, let's move now to a motion to approve. Do we have a first?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve second reading of the 2223 budget.
Mr. Tucker, a second. Mr. Gardner?
Second.
Yep. Good. With that, over to you, Vic.
Mr. Chairman, can I make an amendment, please?
Well, we'll do that after we have the presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
My main, members of council. The budget that is being presented tonight, in accordance with state laws and prepared by the administrator and presented to the council. As the council has directed me, it is a balanced budget with no millage increase. It includes a number of things. It includes the millage, sewer district. I'm afraid people can't hear you if you're not talking into the mic.
Thank you.
He's going to the podium.
And he.
Don't drop the mic, man.
Thanks, sir. Okay. It is a balanced budget with no millage increase. The millage, the sewer millage, as it's been referred to, has been removed from this budget. It is a growing budget, and it's growing for several reasons. One is that reserve funds are used for capital. And we had a significant reserve fund excess this year. We use ARPA funds in the budget. And also, the value of the mill itself increased. So all that combined to result in a fairly significant increase in the budget itself. We also show a significant increase in detailed budgets, in part because we've added detailed grant accounts for the first time. So there are a number of grants that go through the county, and for the first time, our budget will reflect those grants. So when you look at the general fund, the general fund for the county by category is broken down into personnel, operating, and transfers out. So personnel for the county are now over $20 million of our budget as personnel. Operations are about $10 million, and transfers out, which are mostly going to capital, a few things like that, are approximately a little over $5 million. Actually, increases by 25%. Total growth is $7.3 million. One of the main reasons is because the value of the mill has gone up from $255,000 to $287,000. Spending, the biggest increase in spending is personnel. Over $2 million is budget reflects increase of personnel costs. 28% of the overall general fund growth is coming from our personnel. This will include cost of living increases for all county employees of between 4% and 10%. Transfers out, as I mentioned, is a significant increase. We've gone from $1.3 million to $5.6 million. It's about 60% of the total growth of the general fund are transfers out. And those are broken down into, as you see, almost a million for solid waste-related projects, $1.3 million for economic development that came from the sale of land, and $3 million going into capital projects. There's this broken down into the pie chart, for those of you who like pie. So the goals and objectives. County council set goals and objectives back in February. These are those goals and objectives. Red means this budget does not accomplish the goal. Yellow means that the goals are addressed. They may get finished in this year, but they're at least addressed. Green means that they are addressed and will be finished by the end of the fiscal year. So the red items in particular, the sheriff had requested three new positions. Those are not included in this budget. Also included, also not included in this budget were recommendations for the ad hoc personnel committee. I could not include those recommendations because I don't have them yet. So I had to list that as unaccomplished because we don't know what their recommendations are going to be at this point in time. Under our median priorities, they wanted to address compliance with our solid waste ordinance by out-of-county users. Again, this budget itself does not address that. The same thing, it wanted us to fund the Casey West ballfields with the putting of lights and a splash pad. It does not do that. I wanted to increase our, sorry, wanted to increase registration fees for recreation. We do not increase recreation fees. Wanted to fund a litter control officer. It does not fund a brand-new litter control officer. So those are the things it does not do. But what does it do? Well, first of all, it begins the process of the comprehensive plan rewrite. That'll be about a two-year process, so we fund it. It'll take a while to finish it. The same thing with the ZLDR. We fund it. It'll take a while to finish it, but we have funded it. It does remove millage from the sewer budget. It does evaluate and develop and implement a 911 retention plan. As you recall, some months back, there was great concern. And so we have started that process and funded it. What it also does is we continue purchasing vehicles according to our vehicle replacement plan. We continue to develop and support methods to encourage employee retention and continue to implement programs that help us adapt for the workplace of tomorrow. We continue to support expansion of Wi-Fi in the entire county. We continue to digitize records and continue to move to virtual environment for all public records and processes. We've completely gotten all records of the registrar-dee's office digitized now. Now, we continue to move into other departments. So we've started looking at the minutes of council meetings. We go back to the 1940s with minutes before it was a county council, before it was, when it was just the board of directors. So we'll be digitizing those as well.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir.
Does that mean codification is also complete?
I would refer back to the attorney whether he would say it's complete.
Is the codification project done?
I think it's all in the hands of the codifiers now. It's a laborious process. Yes.
Has it been started?
Oh, yes. I mean, it's 90-something percent complete.
I think he asked, what, eight years ago?
It's been a while.
Thank you.
We do continue to partner with Casey Trails, Friends of Goodall Park, and other citizen organizations, such as we did tonight. And on department-by-department basis, reviewing salary schedules, adjusting as needed in order to ensure competitive position and safe staffing levels are maintained. We maintain a focus on encouraging a heightened central Midlands council government commitment to our roads. So those are things that it definitely does accomplish. And our special revenue funds, again, a large increase because it better reflects grants. We budgeted the American Rescue Plan. The fact that we budget those funds does not mean that the council has to spend them. But by budgeting them, it gives the council complete flexibility of addressing needs that may come up in the course of the year. We increased the economic development budget because of commitments to ongoing economic development projects. And again, the capital fund increases from $4 million to $7 million. Most of the $4 million are carryover from previous years that are underway but have not been completed. So the additional $3 million are the excess funds that by council policy, we must spend on these kinds of capital items. Fire service, roughly 10% growth of their budget. Again, much of that is based on millage growth. Cost of living for them as well, 4% to 10% per employee. We do not show revenue from a vehicle fee in this budget. It does not fully fund the fire plan as originally anticipated.
Mr. Carpenter, how short is that dollar-wise?
Probably about $400,000.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
What does it include to pay for that?
What does it?
What does it include to pay for what he said isn't paid for?
The revenue that comes from fire comes from a combination of millage, 10.1 mills in the non-fire-covered parts of the county, and then a per parcel fee that are imposed on all properties that are in the non-fire-covered parts of the county.
How much are the fees?
Solid waste, the budget increases 4%. It's a balanced budget, but it does not address all the desired goals and objectives as we previously said. It does show a COLA of 4% to 10%. Capital expenditures are addressed to the county's capital fund. This does reflect a reduction of service hours at sites. It reflects no longer taking tires at convenience centers and a consolidation of green waste to only a few sites in the county. As you recall, when we went over solid waste during the budget process, we shared that the budget is no longer able to continue providing the same level of services that are needed by the citizens of this county. So in order to maintain a balanced budget, we have to look at what we're providing as services. And that's what this budget reflects. Economic development, again, shows significant growth. However, the growth for that is spent on capital projects. Staff remains the same. Operations remain the same. But the large projects, for example, Prestige Farms, as well as other projects that are out there that we've committed to or in the process of doing. EMS, this is the first year where they're budgeted at 9.1 mills. It is a balanced budget. It does show us growth of personnel expenditures, again, 4% to 10% per employee. It does not address all the desired goals or objectives. Sewer is a balanced budget. It does reflect increase of sewer rates per the rate study. Fully funded, often self-generated user fees with no subsidy any longer. Therefore, it reflects the elimination of sewer millage. The wastewater treatment plant expansion, the design begins. We continue building the Southern Loop. We finished the Richardson bypass project. We show an increase in staffing to ensure quality service. And again, we raise salaries to maintain competition and competitive levels. This is the, I'm sorry, jumped ahead of myself there. So this is the budget that I present to the county council tonight. Chairman, turn it back over to y'all for any questions.
If you go back to the red, green, amber chart, that may be a basis for it. Right there. Yep. All right. Any discussion before we go to amendments? See, there are none. Mr. Gardner, you have an amendment?
I do. I have a handout, too, that Danny, if you'll pass that down. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to transfer $300,000 from funds appropriated in the fiscal year 2122.
Okay.
2122 budget from ARPA funds to provide support to the Mount Pisgah area and surrounding communities in Kershaw County to turn the former Mount Pisgah High School building and property into a community center. This transfer of appropriated ARPA funds is contingent on the Kershaw County School District conveying the entirety of the former Mount Pisgah High School property to Kershaw County, along with any other support and school district might support. The transferred appropriated ARPA funds will be held in distinct account, and the disbursement of the funds for stated purpose would follow county guidelines for use of public funds for a public purpose.
All right. Can we have a second discussion, please?
Mr. Chairman, the Mount Pisgah lost its high school in 1980. They lost its elementary school back in October. It's been a part of that community for 98 years.
Wow.
The people up there had asked me, and they were wondering how they could save their school and that sort of thing. So I came up with the idea of making a community center. I talked with Mr. Carpenter and Chairman Burns. We took a visit to the old school. And we thought perhaps it could work as a community center, social service area. A couple of weeks later, you'll see in the handout, we took a number of agencies here, Community Medical Clinic, Food for the Soul, Library, Livewell, Kershaw, Rec Department, to name a few. And they love the idea about putting in a community clinic and some of the other services that are 25 miles away from Camden. And so I think this is a project that could not only service that area, help that area, help to grow that area in recreation and many other aspects, but it could provide services that a lot of those people can't get to. It also, there is little or no internet up there, so people can't go online and pay taxes. So it could be an opportunity to open up and how people pay taxes up there for one day a month or something along those lines. But I think the opportunities are great. We had a meeting last week and called for the people in the community to come out. It was on very short notice, on about three days' notice. We had 36 people in the community. They are all gung-ho to do it. This is something that the county would start and fund. But after two years, the community, we would start a 501(c)(3), and we would take over the running of the property. But I think it would be a great opportunity for that area that would draw from the Buffalo, Mount Pisgah, Abney, down to Timrod, even just a number of communities up there that it would draw from, it would draw from, that would offer them opportunities that they can't get to. So I ask for your consideration to support this tonight.
All right, Mr. Tucker.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate, Tom, your efforts, Mr. Carpenter, you as well, and all the partnering agencies. I appreciate Mr. Gardner reaching out when he saw that this was an opportunity with the school district to do something good in that area, to expand services, because a lot of times, the rural northern end of this county does not have access to some of the things that we may have from the inner part of the county or even the west part of the county. So I applaud you for your efforts in finding the funds to do this and giving them opportunity to get stable and self-sustaining. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Tucker.
Can I add one more thing?
Mr. Gardner.
I have been in contact with the school district, and they do indicate that they would donate that property to the county. You know, multi-million dollar property, nine acres, I believe. They've already donated the ball fields to us some years back that are across the street, but it's an opportunity that we don't have to build anything to do. So, you know, it's billions of dollars in the school plus the property, so I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us.
Thank you. Further comments? I'd just say that, Mr. Gardner, can you also talk about what you and I chatted about as a public-private partnership with local industry in the area, please?
Yeah, there are a number of industries there, the gold mine, that do a lot of public contributions for Nestle, Luxstone. We've identified several that we will be approaching them as far as some opportunities for them to help donate, provide financial assistance, and perhaps programs, if you will, for that area as well. So it is, there's a number of young people, obviously, because there's a number of school children who are now going to the North Central Elementary. At the meeting the other day, the 36, majority of them were Mount Pisgah High graduates, as I am, 49 years ago. But they are very interested, and really, I heard from a number of others who could not make the meeting, and I've heard from, I can't tell you how many, from Charleston to Greenville and everywhere else, who are interested in whatever they need as far as making donations at the time when this passes, that they will take over ownership of the building, and then they would run the programs there themselves. So we have identified, you have some of the ones there. There are other agencies here. Councilman Agen is one that I think we could reach out to, but there's a number of others who could possibly open some sort of a satellite operation there that provides services for some of the people that can't get to Camden or to another doctor somewhere else, and other services as well. So I think it would be a great opportunity for this council to buy into this.
Talking your mic, please.
Great opportunity in the northern part of the county.
Okay, other comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead, Russell.
Just for clarification, so Councilman Gardner, this will be a one-time contribution from ARPA funds to kickstart it, and then we're hands off.
To kickstart it, you know, part of this money, there's some parts of the building that would have to be for ADA and some other areas that would need some work to bring it up to code or what have you. And then basically, it would be two months or two years of operational money. And then after that, that would be it. That's what we're asking for, to get it up and running. And then we're going to be forming a committee. We have set a meeting for next month, for July the 14th, if any of you would like to go, to talk with the people up there. We're going to set another meeting to talk about what we're going to do, one way or the other. And, yes, this is a one-time request.
All right. Councilman Gardner, I hear your passion for the rural community. I share that passion for rural communities. And I'll support this tonight, because I know how much it means to the folks up in Mount Pisgah, and we want to support those communities. I'd look forward to meeting more of those folks and supporting this. I've heard from multiple people that this is very important to the community. Thank you very much.
Very good. Other comments?
If I may.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you so much. Well, actually, that was in my council briefing tonight to talk about it, because I know that we've, they've been wanting to do this for a long time, and I'm glad you brought it up tonight, Mr. Gardner. I think that they do get overlooked. They're way up there, and it's easy to do, but I am very pleased with what you've done tonight, Mr. Gardner, or that community. And I truly mean that. This is a good thing. And I hope that when we do this tonight for Buffalo, Mount Pisgah, which is the right thing to do, and I'm going to support it, we also look at the Knights Hill Park, Sammy and Russell. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Because I like using the ARPA funds for this. I think it's really going to be a good opportunity for that part of the county. Thank you.
If I may, you know, the school district a few years ago tried to say that that school was dilapidated. I think that the chairman and Mr. Carpenter can verify that it is not dilapidated. It is in relatively good shape. So a lot of it is ready to go now. There will be the need to do some work in some certain areas.
Well, I may meet you out there on 14th. I'll drive myself.
Six o'clock, I'll remind you.
Remind me.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Connell.
Mr. Gardner, I like the idea. Just a few questions to make sure I'm clear on it. So the school district, I think some of the improvements, repairs that they required, required them to bring it up to modern code based on safety and security concerns. Since this is going to be a community center, that's not one of the issues that you have to deal with.
I don't think we would have very, Mr. Carpenter's been there.
The capital costs are limited.
He knows.
Can you speak to that, please?
There are some limits to the building. It does not have sprinklers, so that would preclude us using it for housing, things like that. So there's some things we cannot do with the building without bringing it up significantly that the school district did not do. But they, for example, some years back, they took all the, and they remediated all the asbestos, got rid of them, new roof on it not too many years ago. Air conditioning units are fairly new, so they have put a lot of money in upgrading it. There's just a line where we can't cross over in far as using the building because of what it doesn't have.
Okay.
We're aware of those limitations.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner, between now and third reading, do you think we could have written agreements from any of the stakeholders that will be required to be in place for this thing to continue on so county council doesn't have to fund it in the future?
I would say, I would ask staff to get that process rolling.
Yeah, I mean, you know what I mean?
Let me do that.
If it's the Community Medical Clinic, or if it's, you know, other people that we're relying on, and we're going to try to make this thing happen, we don't want to have just lip service, in my view. I think we want to have something written from them so they acknowledge you're getting some valuable consideration to provide a service.
Mr. Connell, I can't obviously speak for them, but when we started talking to them, as you'll see this report in April, so we've been talking to them for a few months now, and from the very beginning, it was made clear that any commitment that they were willing to make, they had to do it for at least two years. That we could not make a commitment of this level from the county and then have them show up. No one comes after one or two times, they don't come anymore. So they're fully aware that the commitment is for two years at least for that. Now, I would assume therefore they'd be willing to put that into writing as well. I can't guarantee that, but they know that we were looking at a minimum of two-year commitment from each, otherwise not to participate.
Yeah. Well, I would like to see something in writing from those we consider key stakeholders to make it happen, and that way they've got skin in the game. If we're going to contribute and try to make something happen, I think they need to commit as well. And then the only other thing I was thinking of, Mr. DeBose, let me know if this is a useful thought or not, but if it gets transferred, no cost, over to a 501(c)(3), do you think we should have some type of first riot refusal? I mean, heaven forbid, but say the project doesn't work out, doesn't go south, you will have sent numerous amounts of taxpayer dollars to a private entity, albeit a nonprofit, but a private entity. Shouldn't the county have assets revert back in that way if it doesn't work out?
Yeah, Mr. Connell, we can have a reverter clause in the deed.
Okay.
Says so long as it is used for.
Does it have purposes? Okay, thank you. Those are the questions I had. Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Other comments? Yeah, Mr. Snodgrass.
Thank you. Just want to offer my support. Tom, thank you so much for your research on this. This is a vital community to our county, and I love the history there. I was talking to Tom about it, and I didn't realize the basketball powerhouse that Mount Pisgah was in those days, and when you consider the small community, and so I think preserving that type of rich history is very important to us. And Mr. Carpenter, so this has come from ARPA funds, and this won't impact any of our other uses that we were needing those funds for? I mean, this is within the bounds of that use?
Yes, sir. This is very clearly within the context of the federal government set when they provided the ARPA funds.
Good, good, good. Thanks, thanks for y'all's work. This is great.
They control basketball because they grew them big up there.
That's right.
Yeah.
How many points did you score in that gym, Mr. Tom?
Let's go back to the, let's go back to the ARPA funds. You have guarded 10 million for ARPA, and when we passed the original budget last year, there was a million dollars undesignated for the use of the county. And so that's where that million, that money's coming from.
That's what I would recommend is coming from that, at that level of the ARPA funds.
All right, go ahead, Ben.
Mr. Chairman, one other thought. I love this idea, because you're working with the school district, trying to find an asset that doesn't, that's not going to go to waste, and you're trying to kind of force multiply. Makes me think of the town of Elgin as well, just for future budgets. I hope y'all will consider, they're working on some public community center right there at Potter Park. They've already got significant funding. They're trying to get some state funding. If the county contributes at some point in the future, you can piggyback on and use that as a disaster shelter or have rights in the facility, and that literally is the fastest area growing in our county. I mean, when I drove through there, it was a 25% growth rate, or 24.9, 24.8% growth rate from the last instance, which is just crazy. So that's one of the areas I think we need to look out for in the future, too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And we've seen other models, such as we saw at Antioch with Johnny Outlaw, when he got the Antioch School. So it's, it shows the vibrant nature of our innovation, our ability to take care of our people in various ways. Other comments?
If I may, Tom.
Yeah, go ahead, Jimmy.
You know, one thing about this that makes it different than any of the other parks that you've done is that this was an opportunity, Tom, and you seized on it with this property, this building, and everything else. So that's a big difference in some other things that we've done, in my opinion, but thank you.
Thank you. The, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the, it's my understanding that the school district is conveying the old Berndy Cab School to Kirkwood Community group, and they're going to convey the old Bethune School to the town of Bethune. That's my understanding. I don't know if that's...
Yeah, I met with the mayor yesterday on this matter. There's a lot of energy in our county, and let's just fall in and see what we can do to help. All right, thank you. Other comments? All right, we've identified the source of funding. Our rules in amending the budget are, you've got to find a source of funding. Okay? So with that, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor signify. And it's unanimous, I now recognize Mr. Russell Brazel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to also make an amendment to the budget, please. I propose that we amend the fire services budget, Fund 202, to reflect the following changes, and this will affect Pine Grove Fire Department. Under revenue, $194,000 will be added from fee and lieu revenue. Under expenses, $215,000 is added to personnel line items to reflect three additional full-time employees at the Pine Grove Fire Station. $30,000 will be removed as a part-time line item to reflect an addition of three full-time employees. So what we're doing is we're going to do away with one part-time employee and add three full-time firemen, so that Pine Grove has 24-hour service. It's only one person, but it's a start for our community. $60,000 is also added to expense line items to reflect costs associated with the addition of three full-time employees at the Pine Grove Station. And $51,000 is removed from the equipment, non-capital line item, to reflect costs to be cut in order to allow the addition of the three full-time employees. I'd like to make this in form of a motion, and I'd also like to state that I've worked with Will Glover and I've worked with Vic Carpenter to make sure that this works, this isn't just off the cuff. I've spoken about it briefly with a few of you, but we hadn't gone in any great detail. I'd also like to point out that it's the third busiest station in the county, and it's close to the lake. It's going to provide lifesaving services for a lot of people who are underrepresented now.
Okay, yeah, I'm going to restate that, okay? And see if this is comprehensive. The establishment of three full-time employees at the Pine Grove Fire Station?
Yes, sir.
Using FLO funds?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Connell. Okay, discussion, sir.
So again, maybe I got a little bit ahead of myself with discussion, but we basically got this worked out, and I'd like to talk with Mr. Carpenter. Is this feasible?
Yes, sir, it's feasible.
Okay. Does this take anything away from anybody else or cause taxes to be raised?
No, taxes would not be raised as a result of this. Should not be raised as a result of this action.
Okay.
Fees, Russell?
No, sir. No fees, no.
Your fee's balanced?
So, yeah, it'd be funded from fee and lieu money, which is wonderful, as you've seen through the course of the last year, we've put all this time and money into economic development, and now we're getting fruits of our labor. We've got revenues that can be spent in different directions. You can't totally fund the fire service from fee and lieu, because it could get dangerous. But when you've got something small like this, it's just a few, a few dollars, $200,000 is more than a few dollars, but it's just a few folks, but in the scheme of a $30 million budget, this is, this is small. So I don't find it dangerous, I don't find it out of the ordinary for something like this to be funded this way, and I hope that my colleagues can support it, because we definitely need, we definitely need some firemen at the Pine Grove Station 24 hours a day. Any questions?
Mr. Snodgrass.
Thank you. Russell, just a few questions. So this has come out of fee and lieu. Is this, and Mr. Carpenter, jump in here, is this new fee and lieu money that because of reassessment, where's, because we've been, we have been, we've been struggling, we've been talking about fire funding for a long time, and then all of a sudden, it's, we have some stopgap?
The way this would be managed, Mr. Snodgrass, is basically each year, fee and lieu is collected from those industries that have signed a fee and lieu agreement with the county that are up and running on December of the previous year. So we would, in some years, the amount of fee and lieu revenue we have drops, because nothing new got added, and it slowly is depreciating. Some years it raises because a new industry comes on and adds to it. Once we receive the fee and lieu revenues, we take out of that money those expenses that the county council deems are important and need to be met. So economic development budget comes out of that. Whatever is left after the county council has not allocated funds is then divided amongst the taxing entities that are qualified to receive it. So that would be the county, the school district, and in some cases, Lugoff Fire or the city of Camden. So whoever is entitled to receive it would then pull their share out of that, and their share is defined as whatever their normal amount of taxing is. So in the big picture, generally speaking, the school district gets two-thirds of it, the county gets one-third of it, except for those few that are in the other taxing entities. So after the county would allocate funds from the top, so that would be economic development, that would be fire, then it's, whatever's left is distributed. So if it's a year where revenue goes up, then it may be washed. If it's a year where revenue goes down, then there would be a slight decrease for everybody at the bottom.
So if we commit this with this budget, and there's a decrease next year, with that, would we be in a situation that we wouldn't, we would not want to be in, as far as this being able to be recurring?
Good question.
Well, and...
And I'm not, I'm not trying to blow a hole, and I mean, I'm just trying to get...
It's just a decent question.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can't tell you what you would or would not want to, what kind of situation you'd want to be in. Obviously, if council approved it, then that'd imply that you wanted that to happen. It would have, it has the potential of having no impact, or it has the potential of having, you know, up to $190,000 impact on what's distributed amongst everybody who receives the revenue.
So is this, I'm...
Go ahead, please.
Is, so is this, is this money that we'd be pulling from the school district, or is this, again, I'm again reiterating, so is this money that they had $190,000 more last year than they will this coming year, because we're going to use it for fire?
It wouldn't be the full 190. Part of that would come out of the county's share as well, but...
Okay.
But if there was no increase in revenue coming in, then yes, there would be a decrease to all the entities who would receive the funds, so the county and the city.
Go ahead, Russell.
I pardon to interrupt, but we just saw that we had a massive increase in revenue this year.
Yes, sir.
How many millions of dollars is it? Organic growth?
A good $2 million, probably.
So I don't think this is going to take anything from anyone. That's why now it's important, it's critical to do it now.
Right.
It couldn't have been done last year, and it can't be done next year.
Russell, can I ask a question?
I'm tracking.
Absolutely.
Hang on, wait, we've got Mr. Snodgrass.
Yeah, and I'm like, so my questioning is not, I hope it doesn't elude whether I'm for or against this. This is just me trying to wrap my mind around this.
Hopefully, it's helping you come to the conclusion that you...
Come on, go ahead, Mr. Snodgrass. Recognize you, sir.
That's all for now, thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
No, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to share with the public, the reason this county council and small county, rural counties in particular, have to strain over how you fund fire. There's this Act called 388, you've heard us talk about it a lot of times. It favors large counties over small counties. If way back when, whenever Act 388 was passed, if you were a big county, they said, okay, big county, when you already have your full-time fire service in place, we're going to cap you at that fire mill rate, and then you can increase by a small percentage. Well, if you're a small rural county, and you still had a volunteer system only, you got capped real low. So you could never have a personnel increase to get you where you could move to full-time fire. So that's why we struggle over, do you raise a fee on improved parcels? Do you pull from FLO to pay for this? Because the state legislature has not considered, I don't think they contemplated it back when they passed it, but they haven't considered how it hurts small counties in paying for the emergency and safety services they actually need. With that said, I just want, so it is new fee and lieu that's part of...
All the fee and lieu goes in the same pot. So old fee and lieu, new fee and lieu, it all goes in the same pot?
Yeah, I know it gets mixed, but we've got enough new fee and lieu to account for this increase. And I, I understand that fee and lieu is depreciating each year unless you get a new economic development or a new agreement that comes online. But we've got enough new fee and lieu to account for this safely.
We don't anticipate this coming year having enough new fee and lieu to totally offset this.
Right.
So industries like Prestige are not on the books yet. Any others that come are not on the books yet. So the industry that we have on the books, we do not anticipate it would generate enough revenue to totally cover this.
But that could come out of the county's portion of the fee and lieu?
It's divided equally. So we can't just arbitrarily take it from the county and nobody else.
Have, have other entities that would benefit from fee and lieu experienced some type of organic growth themselves?
I, I believe so. I believe the school district's certainly seen a significant increase in their budget this year.
Such that this small move wouldn't impact them? Or have we contemplated?
If you're going to do it, this is probably the best year to do it. I guess I'd put it that way.
Okay.
Can I ask a question along the financial side again?
Well, how about me first?
Let me just get some financial.
Yeah, but you recognized everybody. I've been waiting patiently.
I do want to just.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your consideration.
I just want to capture one thing. And that is the parcel fee for fire versus vehicle fee. And then I'll give it back to Mr. Jones. Can you talk about where we are on the vehicle fee?
Well, the vehicle fee, um, last year, county council did authorize the adoption of a $10 per vehicle fee. But as we know, the next day, the Supreme Court ruled that certain fees are, are not valid. And we determined therefore that since we did not know if that fee would be covered, that we would not start collecting a fee that we had not collected before. The parcel fee for fire, we determined was probably safe because of the terms and conditions the Supreme Court set on determining whether it would or would not be valid. So we kept keeping, we kept collecting the parcel fee for fire, but we did not collect the vehicle fee. So as was alluded to earlier, the fire, uh, fire program is not funded fully to the degree that the county council originally intended it to be funded.
I, I propose that we take that up discussion in some subsequent, subsequent period, probably in the third reading that talks about other sources of funds. Because we may, by the 28th of June, may know more about what the State House is going to do. Jimmy, I just wanted to capture that issue. Go ahead, Jimmy.
How much is in our reserves right now?
The equivalent of four months' spending. So when, that's roughly going to be about $10 million.
You feel pretty comfortable with what Mr. Brazel's proposing tonight?
I believe it, it can be done. It certainly can be done. It's certainly legal to do it. Other counties have done, and we just have never done it.
And we still have a balanced budget?
We have a balanced budget.
Even with the $60 fire fee implementation of last year? Everything's balanced. And you've been, you've been a very conservative county administrator. You've put money back every, pretty much you save money every year. That's where I do have a problem. Why do we raise taxes and fees when we are able to put back so much money every year? But you do a good job at that. I want to say this, Russell, or Mr. Brazel. Good job. I, I got some concerns about it. But, uh, I, I'm going to support it tonight because I think Mr. Brazel's put a lot of work into this. He's been very creative with this. I just want to make sure you convince me by the, the last reading that it's going to work.
Yes, sir. I can convince you. I hope to convince you tonight because there's no, no tax increase. The money's there. You tell me why we shouldn't do it now. And maybe you can convince me that we shouldn't.
Well, the only, the main negative that I would say is that we have not used the fee and lieu stream this way before.
Sure.
And that increases the potential.
Well, we got Lugol Fire, we can help.
I love being a pioneer. I love thinking outside the box and I like doing things differently. We've done this without raising taxes. Put that on the record, sir. Put that in your paper, sir. We've done this differently. Yes, I have, and yes, we will continue to.
I'm with you, Russell.
The sheriff has needs.
We hadn't addressed that.
The sheriff has needs. There are needs that need to be addressed in this community. If we can fund civic projects in communities, which I was happy to support, if we can't provide life-saving services in rural communities, I'm going to be very disappointed tonight, I can assure you.
Other comments?
I'm with Russell. Are you convinced yet, sir?
I'm convinced, Russell.
Thank you, sir. We're going, we're going to make this work.
Okay, all right, Mr. Gardner.
I just have a question. You know, we, we've got the, the fire plan that we put in place a couple of years ago. How does this affect that, change that? As far as, you know, I know we had some timeline where we're adding firefighters or something like that. How does, does this change that? Or how does this change that?
Is Mr. Glover here? Can you come speak to this, sir?
As he comes up. I very deliberately put up on this, uh, screen where we are in red up there on some of those things. Go ahead, Will.
He's doing "ask."
Good evening, sir. In 2023, we were, per the fire plan that was put in place, we were supposed to hire three more firefighters. So, and then three after that again. So the three firefighters that we were supposed to hire, we're supposed to go to the West Water East side. So this kind of does fall in line. It's changing just a little bit. But it does fall in line with the plan that was set in place of hiring three firefighters.
These three replacing what we're going to do in 2023?
This would be, this would be those. Yes, those, those, these three positions would be that. We'd just be changing the dynamics just a little bit. They would be going to the West Water East side.
Yeah, I was just wondering how it would change it.
Speaking to your mic, sir, please.
If you got these three, would you still ask for those three down the road? If, if, I mean, all I'm asking is this going to be an addendum to what we always had in the fire plan?
This, this would help fill out the fire plan by changing the dynamics just a little bit. And then, of course, whenever we put another plan in place moving into the future to add on to the backside of this plan, we would start stacking more.
Okay, on that theme, up in yellow on the screen are some of the things we didn't get done on the fire plan. Do we, do we proceed with the, the new Casset Fire Station in this plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Other comments? Uh, Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Is the funding there for the Casset?
I'm sorry?
Is, is the funding?
Uh, Mr. Connel, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ben.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Tucker. From my best estimation, it just adds another hub to the two hub-and-spoke system that we're kind of running with mutual aid agreements. But it seems like it adds another hub. Is that pretty accurate?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, well, I was just going to say, but let's anticipate at some point in the future, if there's another hub, that means there's going to be, there's going to be a capital cost increase at some point and improve the station to, to accommodate the ultimate full-time rotation that would be there. And I'm fine if that makes sense. If it reduces response times and all the criteria that we talked about in the original fire study, maybe you need another hub that has, uh, that has some additional personnel out there for coverage. But I'll support a second reading tonight. I just want to learn some more about it.
If I may.
Uh, Jimmy. Oh, wait, I, I think Sammy's had his hand up forever. All right, Jimmy, go ahead.
Mr. Glover, you like this proposal? You like this idea?
Yes, sir.
I do, too. I did support the funding mechanism in the first. I don't think he did either. But this man over here to my right, uh, is thinking outside the box. He is getting creative. He is looking at what all we've got. And, and I'm, I'm proud to see that on this county council instead of just automatically creating another fee. I understand this, I never was not in favor of your fire service. I just didn't agree with fees, millage, and things like that. Let's find it another way. This man has set a wonderful example of how we can do that without going back to taxpayers. I, I like it a lot. So you have my support on this tonight.
Okay, back to Mr. Tucker.
Okay, a couple of things. Mr. Glover, I'm glad you, you're here to give me some clarity on the changing of the fire plan. But we're, I'm a little not certain about where we're going with this is that we've already authorized and we started a Casset Fire Station. You can dig a well as deep as you can and have as much water. But without a pump, you will never get water where you need it. Without firemen in that area, then that station don't mean a hill of beans to the citizens that's up there, number one. Number two is that how do we jump from a plan that we already had in place to a plan way over here without securing the funds, which is about $400,000, $450,000, to complete that plan that I never heard about in work budgets and sessions from you or staff? Number two. This money that we're taking, and Vic said it, Mr. Carpenter said it, out of fee and lieu is a slippery slope. We've never funded anything out of that for purposes such as we don't want to get to moving monies from the fee of lieu that are going to be reoccurring and that's going to affect the school district. Let me break that down to you, how it's going to affect the school district. The school district gets 70% of your taxes. So that's about $135,000 out of 194 that we're asking for. The school district millage is only value half of what we have as county millage. So if ours is 287, or say 290, there's 145, there about, maybe a little less. So you have to raise millage more to equate the same dollar amount. As I continue, that is not on the backs of the residents here in Kershaw County. That is on the backs, thanks to Act 388, Mr. Connel touched on that, of the businesses and second homeowners. That's not a big pool that you're pulling from. So with, with all this being said, I commend Russell on, on, on his thought process, out of the box, being innovative. I just think that we have to find another way of funding it other than fee and lieu. And I'm prepared tonight, at the appropriate time, to offer a couple of amendments on how we can fund that that's not dealing with fee and lieu because we still have to address Casset Fire with manpower. We cannot forget about that and put that can and continue to keep, kick it down the road. Those folks in that rural area deserves every bit of what we give everybody else. And I say that because I live in rural Kershaw County. I would like to have more firemen and women at Charlotte Thompson Community Fire Department. That's why.
Oh, y'all have two?
And so with that being said, they're, they're, they are in an area where they can get assistance while we complete the plan that's up in the northern part of the county that very well deserves it as well.
All right, uh, Mr. Jones, you want to?
Yeah, if I may. Mr. Tucker, I, I want you, very well said, but I don't agree with you at all.
As usual.
Anyway, this councilman over here is the future of the county. He's young. He comes up with new ideas. He's thinking outside the box other than just going and creating a fee or creating a new millage. And he and I've had our issues. We fought each other up here. I knew when to be quiet. But this is a great idea. I mean, I really, really, uh, really am happy that this was brought before this council. You know, a lot of us up here just don't seem to think anything happened unless we create another fee or maybe try to get S.B.O. 401, which is a joke, and it's not going to pass, to take the cap off Act 388 so we can have an unlimited amount of money to raise the millage on, you know, if it did. And it would open up Pandora's Box because everybody in the state, every county in the state would want it. So it's a foolish bill and it's not going to pass. And, and I'm usually, and Mr. Gardner knows this, I'm usually always right. And, uh, but Russell, great job. Great job. I'm, I'm supporting this.
Thank you. And I want to, I want to clarify something real quick. The school district, Mr. Carpenter, has more money this coming year than they've had in the past year. Kershaw County has more money. I'm not talking about $10. I'm not talking about half a million dollars. I'm talking about millions of dollars in each budget. We arm-wrestling over something that's, is, is quite ludicrous. Just because we hadn't done something before doesn't mean it can't be done. I want everybody to understand that. I will not be hampered by the ways of the past. We will forge a new future in Kershaw County however we must. Mr. Glover is on board and content. And we will fund those firemen in Casset as well. I can assure you. And I will support Casset as well. And I may sound like Mr. Jones when I say this, but I represent the entire county and I want everybody in the county to get the services that they need.
Yes, you do.
Further discussion, uh, Mr. Snodgrass.
So just a couple of questions on, on our fire plan. So let's talk about Casset. The plan was always, so the, the current Casset firemen are at Shepherd. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so whenever Casset gets built, the crew that's in Shepherd will, will go to Casset?
Correct. That'd be 24-hour staffing at Casset.
And are, are they, are they currently 24 hours now out of the Shepherd Station?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Casset still has its 24-hour service. I, I, I want to point out, too, though, I, I know we're, this is, Russell, this is, you know, this is innovative and we're given accolades and, and I appreciate that. But I do, I do want us to realize there is, we still need, this isn't going to close the gap there is, we still need, this isn't gonna close the gap, that, you know, we're talking about fees and everything. There's still gonna be a need. If fire is going to continue the plan, this isn't gonna keep us from having to face some sort of vehicle fee or some sort of funding mechanism to further the plan because I think the plan needs about, what, $400,000? This is only 190 or 200, you know, approximate. So I want us to be aware of that and I want us, I hope the gentlemen around this dais are, as much as we're fervent now, we are continuing to be fervent when it's time to appropriately, or, you know, more appropriately, fund the fire service through the appropriate channels. And not saying the Felo is not appropriate. It's just, you know, just, again, it's a new way, new way to look at it. My question would be, Russell, would you be, I mean, what if we just had, what if the amendment just said, "We're gonna use $200,000 out of fee and lieu to fund, to give to fund the fire service?" And is, I mean, is it has, so I guess my question is, what if, what if Mr. Glover gets this and six months down the road realizes, "Man, you know what? I tell you, the need is actually one in Pine Grove and two in Casset."
Well, at that point, we're discussing next year's budget, so we'll take it up in six months.
Because, I mean, I guess, you know, does, Mr. Carpenter, does this language or Mr. DeBose, does this, does this put a, does this put a straightjacket, if you will, on the fire service that this piece of money has to be used for this or after they get it?
Yes, this is specific to Pine Grove.
It would be the will of council.
Yeah.
So it's the will of council that we would do this.
Yeah.
Okay. If he tells us next year that something needs to change, I'm all ears.
Okay. I think we're at the point of voting. Does anyone have anything further to add?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Tucker.
So, Mr. Carpenter or Chief Glover, what is the plan to finish filling the plan for Casset for the east side, northeast side of Kershaw County?
And do you even have room to fill it currently?
So currently, we have two full-time firefighters at Shepherd until Casset completion. Those were the initial plan. So once Casset's completed, we'll move those two full-time firefighters from Shepherd to Casset. The plan moving forward was to add another firefighter to the west water east side and then to add another firefighter to the east side. So at that time after Casset's completion, we would look at adding personnel on that side. That's kind of where we're at right now.
Well, that sounded like one to two, where you were adding the folks' additional manpower. What is your recommendation, though, to fund that, I guess is what I'm asking?
Aren't we jumping pretty good ways down the road?
Let's hear the question.
Let me speak, please.
Go ahead.
You guys can say anything up here, but as soon as I raise questions or have a disagreement, it's like I just spat on you or something.
Mr. Tucker has the floor. Go ahead, Tam Sammy.
Mr. Tucker, right now, the revenue coming in wouldn't be enough to allow us to do that. So the current funding stream for fire allows us to run the system we have. And then this amendment would allow us to add that full-time position in Pine Grove. So the funding would be there for that one, but there would not be in the future, the ability to finish the plan is not funded.
But we're not taking anything away from the current funding. This is adding money from a different revenue source to the fire service.
And that's my point exactly. So if we're coming up-
Why didn't y'all think about it?
I got Mr. Brazel.
If we're coming up with $200,000, why can't we add that to the fore when we're halfway there?
Well, somebody else should have thought about it.
Amen.
I represent District One and the people on Lake Waterie and the people in Pine Grove, and I went to work doing this. So to that, I say, "Sir, you should have proposed it."
And all the people in Kershaw County.
Well, we do have another option later on in the third reading of the budget and maybe we can defer that discussion. What do you think, Sammy?
I have no problem. I mean, you guys vote your conscience in your heart.
Okay, so we've, I think we're at the point where there'd probably be another discussion of fire in the third reading. So with that, I'm ready to call the question. No further? Okay. All those in favor signify by raising your hands. Mr. Jones, Mr. Connel, Mr. Brazel, Mr. Burns, Mr. Gardner, and Mr. Snodgrass. All those opposed? And would be Mr. Tucker, the motion passed. Now entertain any further amendments or do we go?
Mr. Chairman, I have another amendment to make.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, gentlemen, that supported that. That means a lot. Thank you, Mr. Glover. I would like to make a motion to fully support the sheriff's request of a $5,000 per year pay increase per deputy.
And the source of the funding? We'll get into that in motion, all right? So let's go to a motion, a second?
Second.
Mr. Jones? All right, discussion. We need to have a source of that funding.
Okay.
Is that your question, Mr. Burns? You gonna let him talk?
Well, under our rules, you make the motion for an item and you discuss where the item will come from.
Well, that's something he'll bring up. He doesn't need to be instructed to do that.
Yes, he does. Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I need no further instruction. I would also ask for fee and lieu money to support the gap. And if we cannot get it from fee and lieu money, I suggest that we use it from reserves in order to get these people what they deserve. Kershaw County deserves safety. We need two SRO officers in every school, but I won't start there. I'll start with paying the ones that we have what they deserve. Lee's done a lot with the little. If we don't raise their pay, we won't be able to compete with the state. They'll go to sled, they'll go to work elsewhere, and we won't be able to get the people that we need to support this community, this growing community. And I think it's gonna put our sheriff in an awkward position.
Okay, let's be clear. You said Felo or reserves?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna need to refine that.
All right, let's start with fee and lieu tax. Mr. Carpenter, will we be able to present a balanced budget using fee and lieu tax revenue that's increased?
We would have to go back and re-figure. The revenue that would be redistributed would take away some of the general fund revenue that was fee and lieu, so we'd have to go back and re-figure the budget. Could we make it work? Yes, sir. It just requires us redistributing because we would have, and I hadn't done the math yet to see what the gap is, but let's say it's $250,000 more than we were currently putting into pay raises for them. So we'd have to take another 250 from fee and lieu, and so that would trickle down. So about a third of that would come from us. So about $75,000 of our general fund revenue would go away that we'd have to either cut spending or replace in some other fashion. But it could be done.
Okay.
But that's how it would be done.
And we could still have a balanced budget.
If we can find the money for a park ranger, we can find the money for this.
This is $500,000 probably.
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, no, it's not that much. It's, what was your original ask, sir? The original ask, Sheriff Bone? Total.
Out the door.
Your total ask was how much? And it's partially funded in the current budget.
Yeah, I wanna say it's about 500. What we do is each one of our deputies, some of them are like our SROs, we have six of them fully funded by the state. Over the past couple of years, we've actually received almost a million dollars in grants from the state to put SROs in our schools. So they're paying 100% of like six deputies, eight are paid, 90% by the school district, which would also be, you know, 90% of their increases would go toward, would come from the schools. But then the remaining deputies, it would be the full five, plus you're looking at the retirement is about 20% now. You look another thousand, so to get a $5,000 raise is about 6,000 total per deputy, but it would come out to about 500. It's about where my-
But that's partially funded in the budget that we're discussing.
Yes.
What I wanna do is fully fund it. So if it was funded at 50%, then that leaves another quarter million dollars to be funded. And what I'm asking is that we fully fund it instead of partially fund it. So it, the total ask was 500,000 or maybe a little more? And Mr. Carpenter's already figured about half of that in the budget. So what I'm asking to do is fund the rest of it, which would be probably between 250 and 300,000, but the gentleman in the back, Tyler, he could tell us better.
Well, I'm a little uncomfortable with this, Russell. We don't have a complete solution when you came in here. Remember, our rules are make the motion and have a solid approach that identifies the source of the funding.
That's not a rule, Mr. Chair, point of order.
I'm the chairman and I'm saying that's where we've gone the last eight years, Jimmy. Now, let me just get back to the point here. The point here is, is we're doing staff work in front of, in front of our staff and we need to have a solid approach here. I take the tremendous need to take care of our sheriff, but this is significant redoing of the budget and we don't have an approach. So we're starting to do math here in front of this whole organization. I'm inclined to table this and bring it back in, but-
Can he table the point of order? Can he table an issue that another council member brought up because he doesn't like it?
There's a motion on the floor and so-
But he doesn't have the authority to table it.
He can make a motion to table it.
You can ask for a point of order.
He can call for a vote to table it.
It's on the table. The motion is on, Ben seconded the motion on the table.
He said he was gonna table Russell's matter because he doesn't like it. He can't do that.
Motion's on the floor.
Mr. Chairman.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Brazel?
Yes, sir.
Would you recall your motion and come back identifying the funding source like you did with fire? Or are you willing to put it up for a vote and have us vote on it?
I'll recall my motion if Mr. Carpenter and Tyler can have us a balanced budget with full funding by the time of third reading.
In two weeks.
Yes, I sure will.
Thank you.
If I could ask you gentlemen to look at it with open eyes and open hearts.
Yes, sir.
I will. I'll table the motion until third reading.
Any further discussion there? Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Connel.
I was gonna say, thank you, Russell, because I wouldn't be able to support it tonight. I usually like to research far ahead of time and understand. I knew about Pine Grove and could look at the numbers that made sense. Here, I'll just have to understand before third reading how we pit recurring costs against either reserves or a actually depreciating Felo account because by design it decreases or it reduces over time. So I would just have to understand that and how that could actually work. And that's what requires some research.
All right, well, I've been told that I don't like it, but I do like it. But the problem is that we gotta follow our own approaches to a balanced budget or find a solution that's not as, not here described. With that, we have one, two for amendments or any other amendments?
I just wanna speak to the conversation I had. I just wanna remind us, I think we're, I feel like, we feel like there's free money out there, but we're taken from something. So anytime you pull on a string, the other end is short. And, you know, there's a lot of hands that go into the Felo budget, school district being, you know, being one of them as well as other entities. And I'm not being for or against it, I'm just saying, and I'm not, if I'm projecting this onto others, forgive me, but what's being communicated to me is like, hey, this is kind of this new revenue source. Never thought about it. It's always been there, but we've always been conscientious of when you pull on the string, there's a reaction on the other end. And so I thank you, Russell, for tabling this and allowing us to give it some more thought because this is a, you know, the fire, the fire thing was, you know, it was kind of a tap of a hammer, turn of a screwdriver, kind of an adjustment, but this one is fairly significant.
I got my sledgehammer.
Let me comment. Let me comment. I like your analogy of Mr. Brazel pulling strings because he's pulling strings of trying to utilize fundings we have now. This council pulls strings, it's creating new fees, creating new taxes to fund something.
But Mr. Jones, those strings are not that long.
Well, you know what?
And so we're taking away-
Free money is where y'all create fees.
And, you know, I'm, you know, I'm not speaking for or against, I'm making observations, I'm helping us, maybe I'm speaking out loud to help myself understand the situation, you know, fully.
See, I thoroughly understand where I'm at with this. I think he's making good sense. He's thinking outside the box. He's not going to taxpayers. And I think it just makes people feel uncomfortable.
We're gonna pay the fiddler at some point. We're gonna dance to the music. We're gonna pay the fiddler.
We are.
And so whether it's through Felo or other sources, when you talk about expenditure like this, it's gonna happen. So I'm just, I'm just making us aware of that and I appreciate the extra time to think about this. But I also wanna make, Mr. Tucker is right. We open Pandora's docks, box of fire, and so here we go.
All right. I think we're ready to say that we're gonna vote on the budget as amended. We have two amendments. One is on Pisgah and the second Pine Grove Fire paid by Felo. Can we have a motion to, let's see, to amend the budget?
So moved.
All right, Mr. Brazel, second?
Second.
All right. Can we, any discussion?
Amended.
As amended?
As amended, yeah.
As amended. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Now with that, we move to a vote, to vote on the budget as amended. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous. Jimmy, did you have your hand up?
I did.
Good, thank you very much.
Just very fast.
Okay, we'll now move on to a new business tab. That includes Lugol Fire District. It's at Tab A, it's on Page Four of the electronic book. You're gonna have to go search for that. And I ask the chief, come on up. The chief, are we asking for a vote tonight?
Correct, on the budget that you have been presented.
All right, I'm gonna read it and let me get it called up. Resolution adopting a budget for Lugol Fire Protection District, whereas CODO South Carolina laws as amended provides that the Lugol Fire Protection District, through its Board of Commissioners and the governing body of Lugol shall adopt an annual budget, whereas the Fire Chief of Lugol has prepared an estimate of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year beginning 1 July. And whereas the, as amended requires that Lugol provide notice and hold a public hearing prior to the adoption of their budget. And whereas the commission has reviewed the proposed operating budget in accordance with the Section 6-1-80, held a public hearing on 11 May. Now therefore being resolved by the members of the commission duly assembled at the fiscal year, Budget 21, 23, excuse me, a copy of which is attached, Exhibit A is hereby adopted as the official operating budget for Lugol during said fiscal year. Can we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Jones, a second?
Second.
Mr. Tucker? All right, chief, let's have the presentation and then we'll move to a vote.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity to come up and speak. I've spoke to a number of councilmen regarding our budget this year and it's gonna be a little bit unorthodox, what we've done in the past. But I have heard plenty of folks speak up here tonight on behalf of this community, mainly by council. I do have a quick question. I keep hearing fee and lieu of taxes, but if you look on my, on my 2022, 2023 final budget, you'll see that fee and lieu, I'm curious, where is that money? Because I have a lot of industry in my district and you can see that I'm under $100,000 in fee and lieu. So where is that money? Maybe I'll get some direct answers a little bit later on. I'm not looking for that tonight. But you also see in fee and lieu, there's also other income. Not other income is where we do billing for accidents outside of anybody that pays taxes within our district. And that billing company generally, the revenues come in at about $9,600 or $5,000. I don't go after people. I don't go after their, we don't send collection agencies. But I am very curious because fee and lieu, and you'll see the Invista fire contract there, that's a contract that was not negotiated on behalf of this county or from this county. That was a contract negotiated through Lugol Fire Department with Invista. So fee and lieu, I really would like to know where that money's at because I'm not even touching $100,000 and we have more industry in Lugol than we do in the county combined. So with that being said, you can, you can look here, and I wanna bring up some other points here really right quick. And this is nothing that nobody up here in council or anybody in America right now don't understand. Fact of the matter is, our fuel is blowing us out of the water. The last two months, I have spent one-third of my total year's budget on two months of fuel. January of 2022 or to current, so since January, our fuel has increased by 153%. Since May of 2021, our fuel has increased by 165%. That is detrimental to my organization, absolutely ridiculous. If you will see and will look, if you need me to break this down for every line item, then I will do so. We present a balanced budget every year and I have fought for that every single year. What I'm looking at is, I look at the county's budget and then I see that these folks are gonna be receiving anywhere from 4% to 10% increase in pay. And what I have expressed to a number of councilmen is, my firemen generally get 1.5%. 10 to 12 cent on the dollar to put your life on the line for the citizens of Lugol Fire Department, making $11.12 an hour. You get a evaluation done, you're rated on a scale of one to five, a yearly evaluation done on a scale of one to five. If you average a 3.5% to 4% or four on your, because you're not gonna make a five, all right? Then you have nothing to obtain. You have no goal to go after. So my people have been here, they're not my people, they're my coworkers. Let me stop calling them my people, all right? They're my coworkers. They're my family at Lugol Fire Department. When I have a four-year, five-year member who has earned a solid 3.5% to 4% on their evaluation and they get a 10 cent on the dollar raise, that is heartbreaking. So the way the budget was presented this year is because, A, I will tell you that I am seeking an amendment and I have spoke to many of you. I spoke in depth with Vice Chairman Tucker on Friday evening.
Yes, sir.
I have spoke with Jimmy, Councilman Jones, Councilman Connel. We'll be meeting with Councilman Brazel. I spoke with Chairman Burns. Fact of the matter is, we had to reach out to our attorney. We had to make appropriate amendments. We had to have resolutions drawn up. But I could not afford to not have a budget in place by July 1. So if I would have done this and would have had our budget and resolutions and amendments in place, and I come to you and you turn me down for what I'm looking for, then I'm starting over from scratch again. At least I know right now that I can get a balanced budget approved. Now, am I asking you to approve that budget? I absolutely am. I am. But I also want you to know that I have to have two public hearings and we just got this finalized today because we had some issues with the amendment, some issues with the resolutions. And I expressed that to you Friday night, Mr. Tucker.
Yes, sir.
And so by doing that, speaking with our, well-respected, by the way, attorneys, one of the best SPD attorneys in the state, Lawrence Flynn, we have come to the consensus of what needs to be done. And I have to have two public hearings. I have to have a public hearing on the amendment and I have to have the public hearing on what the proposed or what we hope the revenue will bring in. I cannot tell you what that is tonight because I would be breaking the law because I have not held my public forum yet. I haven't had the opportunity to allow the taxpayers of the Lugol Fire District to come in and voice their opinion. I will tell you this, that I am looking to raise the salaries of my firemen, of our firemen, of my family, and I'm also looking to hire three additional firemen because we, in the, we have spoke deeply and deeply and we've been dealing with this for months about growth. Well, our community has outgrown Lugol Fire Department and we are struggling day in and day out. I look at these guys' faces, they are dog tired, they're beat down. Yesterday afternoon, we had a structure fire. It's 105 degrees outside. When it's hotter outside than it is on the inside of that building, we got a problem. And I look at them and they've been through two or three cylinders. You know what kind of athlete it takes to get through that? That is unbelievable on the body. It wears you down and these guys are doing it for $29,000 to $34,000 a year. I'm very passionate about this. I will not go away. I promise you. I will find a way to get them what they deserve. So I know you're ready for me to move on, and I wish to do so. So I am asking for the budget that is presented in front of you to be passed tonight, but I am telling each and every one of you that I'm coming with an amendment come July twelfth, after I've had, have held two public hearings at the Lugol Fire District, and I am backed by my board one hundred percent. What would you like to ask me, sir?
That's excellent. Would you take some questions, chief?
I absolutely will.
All right, who made the first motion?
I did.
Jimmy, go ahead.
Chief, great job, y'all do a great job, appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry for the misunderstandings that you got with the leadership in Kershaw County, when you said how you wanted this placed on the agenda, I think you went back and forth, back and forth, and wasn't getting any clarification, correct?
That's correct.
All that's gonna change.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Conell.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear, you're saying that you can't talk anything about the potential even percentage increases, a projection, because you have to have this other meeting first, the other two meetings first?
I have to have two public hearings.
Okay, all right.
Right now, I'd be introducing that before having the hearings.
Sure.
Okay, other comments?
Chief Spitzer.
Go ahead, Russell.
If I may, I appreciate the passion, I feel it in you just as much as you probably felt it in me a few minutes ago. Look forward to supporting this, and then after you have your budget hearings, being able to review it. Obviously, we won't be making any real decisions for you tonight.
Only to say, I do ask for you to approve the budget that's before you tonight. If not, I cannot move forward.
Is it any tax increase involved?
There's no, there is not a millage increase, no.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, other comments? Hey, chief, great to have you here with your passion on this issue, well done. No other comments? Oh, Mr. Tucker, go ahead.
I just have one for Chief Spitzer, and as you were doing your due diligence, going through your amendment, was it in the cards or better for versus your proposed amendment that you're coming back to with us? Or asking for a millage increase?
Didn't?
That would help you in that? And what you want to do for your firefighters, for your salaries?
Strangulation of Act Three Eighty-eight.
Okay.
Has completely annihilated that.
Not nothing.
I can tell you this, and I will give you this, I would be looking at an increase of one-point-four mills, it wouldn't even give me enough money to give my firemen a increase in salary.
I just wanted to make that clear while you were taking this avenue.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, sir. I think we're ready to vote. Chief, thank you again. With that, we have the motion to approve, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you, chief, and it's unanimous, we'll see you on the twelfth.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Very much.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we move to the next item on the agenda, which is item number one, it's in Part Three of your electronic book on Page One, and it's in Tab I, I think you may have hard copies. With that, it's a selection of an executive recruiter, and I look to Mr. Tucker to make the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendations from the administrator on executive recruiter and have discussion.
Discussion and not vote. So with that, let's have a second? A second on that motion.
Second.
Mr. Gardner, with that, we move to discussion, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I've had time to preview some of the recommendations that Mr. Carpenter gave us, and what I would like to see this body do is have time to preview that, and let's have a discussion amongst ourselves on what plan we're gonna use, or what company we're gonna seek, or if any company we're gonna seek in moving forward. I think we need to finalize our next best step, and then move forward from there on this process. I don't want to delay it, but I also don't want to rush through it and get it wrong. But I know that there was others on this diocese that wanted time to have some dialogue amongst Mr. Carpenter's recommendations.
Okay, other comments? Yeah, Mr. Jones.
You're gonna give us your recommendation shortly? You gonna talk about it?
I do have a firm that I would recommend if we use the firm, yes, sir, I do have recommendations there attached.
Want to hear from him first, Jimmy?
Yeah, well, no, we can go ahead and put it on forward. Whatever y'all want to do, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, let's hear the recommendation, but I would also say Mr. DeBoz will be coming back, and we've asked him to do what's called a comparable of other pay, so at this point, we don't have a decision by us as a team, what we're gonna do to offer.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I think I've made clear, I'm very, very interested, I'm not interested in signing no contract to hire any search committee, I want to give our current deputy administrator a chance, six months, to see what kind of job he can do, and I think he can pull it off.
Yeah, and that's clear.
I don't want to cloud it, sir, with, I don't want to cloud his ability to prove to us by having a search committee over him.
Yeah, and we're not gonna vote on that tonight, but that also gets to the issue at some point, we need to come up with pay, and that will be decided by this body as well, but not tonight. With that, I go to Mr. Carpenter, and I go to that discussion.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I reached out to four firms, three of them replied to me. I have attached the information that they provided to me in the packet you have in front of you for your review. As I went down and looked at it, I came to a recommendation that if the council chooses to hire a firm, I'd recommend Baker Tilly, it's one of the largest national firms, it has a national presence, they have done hundreds of counties and cities across the country. Locally, they have done Lancaster County, recently two different searches for Lancaster County. They've got the, what my conclusion is, they've got the most experience, and they also have the most exposure amongst qualified professional administrators.
Right. And the reason we ask it be done tonight is, are we gonna lose Mr. Carpenter here in the next four days? And so the idea is that we hear his recommendation, y'all get a chance to talk to him about it, okay? Jimmy, back to you, you asked for this.
You talking about the discussion, excuse me, discussion on the rehiring of the administrator? Let me just say this, I stand where I said, I'm not gonna support going out and getting any search committee at this point in time, this is just me, folks. I'm gonna absolutely support giving our deputy county administrator a six-month opportunity to see how he can do, and I think he'll prove us pretty well on that. Again, it would just absolutely overburden or put a cloud over his performance, I think, trying to do his job for us by us doing this right now. I think we owe it to him, I've had many, many, many members of the community come, call me and come to me and said, why don't you give him a chance? And I said, well, that's what I plan to do, and so I won't be voting for any search committee right now whatsoever.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, other comments? We need to talk to Mr. Carpenter about why he picked this particular company, it's national, some of these others are regional, is there any comparable discussion about how much one would cost or the other? Tell me how fee structures are set up.
Well, as I included in my attachment, I broke down the fees, the fees are roughly similar for each company, the high is thirty thousand, the low is twenty-four thousand. For the, for the search, they all provide a one-year warranty in the sense that if an individual that they provide us is hired, and then the individual either leaves on his own volition, or is fired without cause, or I'm sorry, is fired with cause by the council, then they would conduct another search for free, no charge to the county.
Yeah. And then what kind of criteria do they use, or do we provide them a criteria after they interview us?
They would, would pull together stakeholders from the community, they would be identified by the council, who they should, who they should include as stakeholders. Obviously, the council is also stakeholders, so the individual members of council, and they would develop a profile of the individual that the council is looking for.
Okay, other comments? All right, Mr. Jones.
I'd like to ask this council to table this tonight, let's stick with our county, deputy county administrator, to let him have the opportunity to prove to us what he can do.
Okay, is that a form of a motion, Mr. Jones?
Uh, yes.
Okay, the motion is to table and go for six months with Mr. Templar. Is there a second? I hear no second, so we'll move on.
I don't believe this, I'm very disappointed.
Any further discussion?
Very disappointed.
Any further discussion? All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Ben.
So Mr. Templar, as the heir apparent, has done an outstanding job for county council in Kershaw County, and I think in other aspects of Kershaw County prior to his work here. I'm thinking that on one side, the other side is, competition is all I've known my whole life, and it always leads to the best result. Instead of a cloud, competition, I think, draws out the best performance in people. And also, instead of having a cloud of, well, what if the grass would've been greener on the other side? Ideally, I'd love to, not love, I'd love to see, I'd like to see if a search came back and we said, you know what, Danny is the best in the nation for us, and choose him in that way. Excuse me, Mr. Templar, I'm too informal sometimes, because I know him so well, he's such a great guy. Is this for actual vote tonight, Mr. Chairman?
No.
Yeah, this is discussion.
I said that in my.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's a, there's a lunch I need to have with Mr. Templar and others to learn further about some philosophical things in government that we have never discussed, because we've been talking actual practical day-to-day application of how to administer some of these programs. But anyway, for its worth, council, those are some of the thoughts I have. I love competition, but I also really enjoy and value the work product I've seen so far over six-plus years.
Yeah, very good, thank you. Any other discussion? I think we can close it, and thank you, Mr. Tucker, for bringing that forward. The next item on the agenda, I gotta get over there and get it, here it is, is a financial audit services bid at Tab J, Part Number Four, on Page One, if you go to Part Four in your electronic book. All right, Mr. Carpenter, can you introduce this?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we put out for bid our audit services for the current fiscal year and the next three. Two bids were received back, you see them in front of you, Malden and Jenkins from Columbia and Shaheen Hancock and Godwin of Camden. The bid was obviously dramatically lower for Shaheen Hancock and Godwin for the first year as well as for the three years of the contract. Shaheen Hancock and Godwin, incidentally, does have the current contract, so they're very familiar with this county, and the personnel and our financial condition, so it is a recommendation of the staff that we go with Shaheen Hancock and Godwin.
All right, can we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Gardner, a second, from Mr. Conell. Discussion. Seeing there is none, we move to a vote, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. We move to the next item, which is a recreation master plan, we were detailed to do this, asking Mr. Carpenter to bring it in after six weeks, he made it under the wire before he departs, and is a vote required here? Okay, with that, we turn to Mr. Carpenter, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, yet another opportunity provided to me by the council to turn with a report to you. As you recall, a few meetings back, we had citizens bring to the council their thoughts, their vision for what they wanted to see one day perhaps in Kershaw County. So staff was directed to come back with an update of those facilities and what was involved with them, as well as a report of where we are as an organization within our rec master plan. So the first thing is care, as they call themselves, they presented to them a report that shows several regional facilities, they indicated a willingness to secure significant funds from the private sector to go towards this project. Again, at your request, we have come back with an analysis of costs and some details. The first they provided was City of Orangeburg's recreation complex. See there, the schematic of that facility? This is what the facility looks like upon being completed. The initial budget was fifteen and a half million, final cost is eighteen-point-two million. That was approximately, it was completed in twenty twenty, so about two years ago. So the current cost today would probably be about twenty-one million to build the same thing.
Is it a baseball field, or what is it?
It is a complex, so there are baseball fields, softball fields, parking.
Thank you, thank you very much.
They paid for it with a penny sales tax, is how they paid for it. The company that did it, each pinwheel as you see, has concession stand, press boxes, bathrooms, their playgrounds, hiking, biking trails, et cetera. It's a significant piece of land, over a hundred acres, I believe. Patriots Park in Sumter. Again, a two-hundred-acre complex, it is paid for with a penny sales tax. The cost of it was a total of thirteen million for the generalities, of which seven million were the baseball, softball, five million for soccer, and then a pavilion for a million. Hartsell, Byerly Park. Again, it's been built over the last twenty years, the eight ballfields were done, finished about fifteen years ago, and it was five million just for those, probably fifteen million dollars to do today. It was paid for by a foundation, private foundation paid for that. Then this one in Edwardsville, Illinois, is an example of a regional park as well. It has soccer, it has open fields, as well as ballfields. Eighty-three acres, fourteen-point-three million. They use bonds to pay for their projects. City of Orangeburg and their gym. Beautiful facility, if you've had a chance to see it. About five million dollars for this, again, a penny sales tax paid for, two separate gymnasiums, this is about, I think, four years old is when they did it as well. So those are the projects that were presented to us, so the cost of any of those is anywhere for, for the full-size projects, we're probably looking at a minimum of seventeen million, up to twenty-s millions for a full-size project. So the status, then I was asked to brief on the status of the current rec plan. These were the recommendations that are funded or complete, the armory refurbishment, we have completed the brick repointing, as you can see from the outside, we've completed the purchase of the necessary property to move the maintenance yard, so the next phase is now underway to move the entire maintenance facility out of the armory, and then to turn the surrounding property into paved parking and landscaping. The dog park that was in there has been constructed, is open for use. The Eldon Community Park, it has been constructed and is open for use. Cool renovations, splash pad was added with shade structures, new restrooms were added to serve the splash pad. Watery River Veterans Park Development Phase One has been completed with the walking trails to launch. Phase Two is partly underway, we've received funding for a fishing pier, so that is in the design phase, and that should be underway probably sometime in the next three to six months. Casey West Ballfields, the Phase Two lighting, we added lights to two of the new baseball, softball fields, we still need to add lights to two more. And then the walking trails, we've added almost five thousand feet of walking trails, over two thousand in Veterans Park and twenty-five hundred in Eldon Community Park. This is what's not been completed yet, according to the, to our rec master plan. The Anderson Field renovations, which is the Miracle League field there at the Parks and Rec Office, the backstop extensions at Dobie and Casey West, good Allstate Park acquisition, irrigation and turf development, we've done some irrigation work, but not at all facilities. Casey West Parking in North Central Area Facility, the baseball fields up there, the Science Park, the renovations, skate park, the Smith Road renovations in Lugol, Woodruff Park renovations, and walking trails. Things we have completed, again, this is the costs of what we have done and where the funding came from in some cases. So the armory refurbishment, maintenance building came from the state, the dog park, the Mason Family, and the Play Foundation, the community park from the state, the splash pad, those are our funds, the city also put in about three hundred thousand into that. Veterans Park, Phase One, ATAX funds, Casey West complex, and then the new baseball fields at Casey West. You recall when the school district built the Watery Elementary, they took away from us the ballfields that we had there, so we had to diverge from our plan in order to build the new ballfields and replace the ones that were taken. In Larry Dobie, the money we spent on Larry Dobie, office, and then Seaboard Park. And Larry Dobie, the money we spent on Larry Dobie, office, and then Seaboard Park. These have all been money we've actually spent on Parks and Rec in the last ten years. Several million dollars. Splash pad, just remind you what it looks like if you need it to. Community Park. Veterans Park. Park Park. Say that three times. Ball fields at Casey West. So what's next? The budget that was presented will be recommending an update to the master plan. It's been ten years since we did it. We've completed a number of projects. In other cases, uh, things may change. So that would include potential future facilities, as well as the funding needed and the sources of revenue required. So in order to accomplish some of the desired outcomes that were presented to the council, we would recommend that the master plan be updated, and that could then take all those proposals into consideration. And then they would come up with a proposal that would be presented back to the county council. Uh, any future facilities that would be included in there, we would include where the money would come from or sources the money could come from. But then again, county council would have to approve any plan. That is.
Back it up. And so you, as the administrator, can go ahead and authorize this.
As far as, um, yeah, it's included in the budget that's presented to the council. Yes, sir.
So that gets to the recommendations from CARE. That gets to the recommendations that we have across the board. Uh, turnaround on that study would be?
Four months.
Yeah, it's been ten years since we've had such a study. So, any further discussion on that? Uh, seeing there is none, we move to the next item on the agenda, which is a proclamation, uh, put forward by, uh, Sammy Tucker. A proclamation recognizing Vic Carpenter for his service to Kershaw County. And as I understand it, it was written mostly by the employees.
It is from the employees.
And so that, I'm gonna read it, and then we'll take a motion. Whereas Vic Carpenter served Kershaw County from 2011 to 22, as administrator, managing operational budgets of fifty million dollars and over four hundred employees. And whereas Vic has selflessly, humbly, and tirelessly served the citizens of Kershaw County by exemplifying the highest standards of honesty, integrity, and stewardship. And whereas Vic Carpenter has established an organizational culture of trust and respect, earning him the admiration, loyalty, and goodwill of Kershaw County employees. And whereas Vic Carpenter has been an agent of change and visioning and implementing cutting-edge retention and development programs for employees. And whereas Vic has provided leadership, resulting in Kershaw County being a three-time recipient of the J. Mitchell Graham Award for Innovation in Government Services and a two-time recipient of the Baron Laramore Award for Regional Partnerships. And whereas Vic Carpenter brought credit to our local government by representing Kershaw County as a two-time president of the South Carolina Managers, Administrators and Supervisors Association and chairman of the South Carolina Local Detention Committee. And whereas Kershaw County respects the accomplishments of Vic Carpenter in serving South Carolina communities, large and small, rural and urbanized, for more than twenty-three years. Now therefore be it resolved that Kershaw County hereby acknowledges, recognizes, and thanks Vic Carpenter for his many contributions and accomplishments in Kershaw County and extends its congratulations for a job well done. And Mr. Tucker, you want to make the motion?
Make a motion that we approve this proclamation and recognizing Mr. Vic Carpenter.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Jones, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, FMA, and my colleagues, um, this proclamation, Mr. Carpenter, um, was solely from the employee's idea. Um, this was kind of hard to keep from you. That's why it wasn't on the agenda. We had to amend it. Matter of fact, we kept it from the chairman, too, because we didn't know how much he would tell you. So, um, with that being said, with that being said, uh, they dearly love you, and you have, you have inspired them and, um, put, and believed in them and just put ICAN in their life where they can do many great things moving forward and set them all up for success. So I, in this council, thank you for your hard work and dedication to this county. And as I always say, I wish we could clone you, but since we can't, um, we're gonna wish you well in your next endeavors.
Uh, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, if I may. You know, Sammy and myself were, we sat in on the committee to hire Vic. We, I think we interviewed three, was Tom there?
Tom was there, too.
Mm-hmm. And of course, Tom and Danny, I mean, Tom and Sammy did not want you. I was, I was, it is true. I was fighting for you, Vic, and so was G. Wise. G. Wise and I were like this. I mean, we had it together.
Your nose is growing.
Right, but nope.
Whatever. But seriously, Vic, they've grown to love you because they knew I was right when we hired you. And you've done a good job, and I know it's been wonderful working with me. I wish you, it's been wonderful working with you. And, uh, I wish you the very best in your endeavors. You know, like you said, we can call you.
He ain't gonna answer, maybe.
But thank you, Vic, for what you've done.
Other comments? Uh, David?
Vic, thank you so much for, uh, what you do, your dedication to the county. You know, as someone that's newer here, that had a, you know, didn't really have a whole lot of connection with the community up until just recently, uh, being able to come in, and you helped me understand, uh, you know, even further operations, um, county operations. And I think one of the, one of the legacies that you will leave behind is helping people put a face with county government. You know, sometimes when we, when things are just numbers, or the county is just, oh, those people, or government, or, you know, all of that, uh, it's easy to make all sort of general statements. But one of the things that I've recognized about you is lifting up the employees and allowing the citizens to see that, hey, there are faces behind what is called county government. There are people who get up every morning to make sure that, uh, the recycle center uh, is operational so that you can go and take your garbage. There are people that ensure that EMS trucks are running down the road, that the sheriff's office is doing what it needs to do, plannings, and all these things. And so, um, I don't know what that means to you, but from my view, uh, thank you so much for personalizing county government in such a way that the citizens, I feel like, have been able to resonate with. And, uh, and I know that you'll continue that in your new endeavor. Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Gardner?
Now, let me just say that one page doesn't do service to the value of this man. Uh, thank you, Vic, for all you do, uh, and all you've done for Kershaw County. Uh, you've been a good friend to all of us here, and we appreciate that. And you've, uh, you've covered our tracks very well, and we appreciate it. Best of luck down the road.
Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vic, um, you've done a great job, I believe, because of the low stress and anxiety I feel. Oh, you've done a great job because Jimmy says he was here. If I can reclaim the floor real quick. You've done a great job because of low stress and anxiety, I feel, in serving on county council. You made it, for me, anyway, easy to serve on county council. Whenever I have a question, you're responsive, and you're on top of things, uh, in a way that's meaningful to me. Aside from all that, the relationship that we have is special to me. Because outside of immediate family and friends, you're one of the men that I've prayed with the most since I've moved back to Kershaw County. Because we prayed every meeting, we prayed every meal, and that means a lot to me. So just want you to know that I love you. I wish you well as you go to Virginia. I hope that you form some more important relationships up there as well, but this one's gonna stick with me. Thank you, Vic.
Yeah. And I'll close it out as a chairman, saying, thank you very much, sir. I have a small thing for you as we close out. Uh, with that, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous. Vic, if you could come up, I want to give you something. This is what I wanted to give you last week, but this is a symbol of the county you serve so well. And I just want you to turn around with it.
No pictures, no pictures in eleven years in two and one night.
All right, get one more picture. Let's get one. Come on.
That's all of us.
Thank you for your patience. Uh, let's move down to item number four. Discussion of electronic meeting when, uh, a council member is absent. And I would recognize Councilman Jones, please.
I still move for this. We don't, we don't need to vote this in, do we?
No, sir.
It's just a discussion.
Yes, sir. Okay. Go right ahead.
Well, I was, I was in Connecticut, I think, a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I had asked Danny, the deputy county minister or acting county minister, to go ahead and set up Zoom for me to come in. He had, because we haven't done that before, I believe, right, Danny? I was the first. And it was an idea that I had, and they did it. And it was actually set up well. What didn't happen, I was really wanting to talk to the chairman about this, but he's left, is that he didn't do a sound check with me. He just kind of went into the meeting, so I got cut off. Ended up having to go just to telephone. But guys, it can, we can do it. We can do the Zoom meetings if a council member has to, has to, uh, leave or not, or they're not able to make one of the meetings. And I would just kind of want to discuss it with y'all, because I'd like to see Mr. Templar move forward with that on our behalf. To set up, because it'd be minimal, would it not, cost-wise? We already have the capability. Danny, just very briefly, would you just tell them what you'd have to do to set us up for Zoom if one of us was out, sick, or traveling?
I'm worried you might.
We just, um, we have the little camera here, so the person on the other end of the Zoom can see the council and their participation. And, um, so, uh, just with the individual who is gonna be on the Zoom, the councilman, we would just, going forward, have a connection check with them before we start the meeting. So just to kind of make sure, we shook that system down several times before we connected with you, but what we didn't do was connect with you, which would have been the most logical.
Well, I never got, I never got any sound check or anything. We just kind of jumped into the meeting. And I'm not trying to beat up on anybody, but it's just the facts. You know, you got to slow down. You got to work with the administrator if one of us are out and we're zooming in.
So that's a, that's a question I have. So we can take more than one person, so bless you.
Right.
We can't have no more than three out anyway. That's part of our rules.
Yes.
So it can hold whoever is out, uh, to be able to zoom in.
Right. And as we make the improvements to the chambers, uh, going forward, that capability will increase and become a little more solid.
Now, will we have the capability of seeing them or just hearing them?
You will see them. That's what this little camera here is for. So you have audio and video?
Okay, that's gonna show up on the screen, or?
No, it's just gonna, um, it was like a person-in-person.
Okay.
That we display up here.
Okay. Yeah, because I was absent at that meeting, so a little lost. So it will give you like a picture-in-picture up in the corner so we don't block the screen from the agenda items.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
You have any further, council?
That was it. I just, uh, I don't, so what I'm gonna say openly is that I'd like to see Mr. Templar move forward with this unless somebody has.
Sounds like he already has.
We already have, yeah.
We just need to, for you to be absent one more time. I'm only kidding.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
And I would just add, just make sure, you know, in my, when I've done that before, it works better if you have some sort of earbud or sometimes, and the IT guys can explain this, you know, every mic is different on a device. So I would recommend investing in some sort of, um, some AirPods, uh, because if you rely just on the mic, just on the computer, depending on what kind of computer it is. And I think the last meeting, Mr. Jones, that was kind of the issue, was I think when you got close to the screen, when you got close to your computer, we could hear you, uh, a lot better. And, uh, so I would just, you know, if you're gonna do that, let's just make sure you keep that in mind as well. It may not be something in the chamber. It may be something on our, on our, on our own device.
Well, and two, it takes counsel working with the individual that's out. I mean, we just can't, because it's a new concept. And, I mean, I do Zoom meetings two, three times a month. I know some of you may do them every day. But it's not a complicated process. And if we've got it, I just think it's better for us. And when I had to go to the telephone, it's harder to participate. And, uh, but Danny, Mr. Templar's done a great job on that, and I guess you can feel free to move forward and have it set up for anybody who's gonna be out.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think this is moving in the right direction. I mean, anytime you have technology involved, it's not gonna be perfect. Connectivity on the other side, wherever you are remotely visiting, at the hotel or on vacation, wherever you might be, it could be funky and make us think that we're doing something wrong here, but it's real. You never know, but we give it our best attempt, and, uh, either way, under our rules, we'll have a quorum, so.
And I think, um, we, I'm not sure, I think we'll get a chance to test it again because Councilman Brazel will be out on the 28th. He'll actually be out of country, so that'll be a chance to do a nice run on it. If he's coming up on Zoom. He may come up just on conference call, I'm not sure. But it'll be a good time to do another run. Anything else, Councilman Jones?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, um, any further discussion on that from anyone else? Hearing none, let's move to item number five underneath new business. Discussion regarding hiring of administrator.
I'm gonna ask that that just be dropped. I think we've already done it.
I think I was about to ask you. We already had a couple of discussions on that, and if you're good with that, we'll move on.
Very well.
Okay. Well, we're down to council briefings. We're gonna start with Mr. Cornell. Councilman Cornell?
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. I already bore my heart out to Vic. Thanks again. I wish you safe travels and Godspeed. That's all I have.
Amen. Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Thank you. Just a couple of things right quickly. Vic, congratulations on your new venture, and I know you'll do well and, um, fall in love with you like folks here have. Um, when's your last day? Friday.
That's right.
So anyway, and I know we've been blessed in working with each other. Um, I got a couple of things I want to say here just for the record. And I'm not trying to embarrass my colleague here, but I, um, Ben Cornell is a fine man. And let me tell you what I'm talking about. I've known his family all my life. And when I hear some of the negative garbage, the despicable, you know, I'm not a person who gets angry, but that just really hits me the wrong way when someone is speaking about someone's family and them all because of politics. Ben, I want to tell you, congratulations, and I also want to tell you that, uh, you're gonna make a fine House of Representatives member. And I have much respect for you and your family that I've known for many years. And when someone will absolutely throw in an ad, well, what is he, a Mormon? Or what is he, how dare somebody do that? And I'm sorry you had to go through that. But anyway, we've got a good man here and a good family, and I just want to say that. Now, I'm not done. Sammy, Russell's gone. I'm serious about Nice Hill.
Hear you loud and clear.
Okay, I really mean that, because I know you've talked with folks. I know Russell's talked with folks. I know Al Bozak talked with the folks. You know, we do all these other big, big projects. Let's do some of those folks.
I've got several things in mind that's, um, just waiting to get through budget cycle.
And, um, yeah, and also, of course, I'm very happy about what Tom did tonight. That was actually on my discussion, but I don't need to discuss anymore. And to Mr. Snodgrass, I just want to say that we haven't always gotten along. We haven't always agreed. Hardly ever do we agree, but bottom line is I do wish you the best in your move. Now, I saw where you've already moved, and you're living up there now. Is that correct?
I've been in the process, yes.
So you're not living there now?
My family's there.
Are you living here, still here?
I'm still, I'm still transitioning, and, uh, at my current, I'm still.
You have a legal address here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you know about when something's gonna happen? Because I've had some people talking to me about it, and I said, David, to tell you, you know, you're very transparent, and I know you'll tell everybody what the process is, but there is some interest out there.
Sure.
You know, because they saw where you had, I think, mentioned to your congregation where you're going, that you'd be glad to be a resident there now, that your family's there. So I just want to make sure that we got it cleared up, that you are a resident in your district.
Yeah, so I'm in transition.
Okay.
And I'm talking with.
You know about how long that's gonna be?
Not sure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, but I wish you the best.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
If you'll just let us know when you're going to be going. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
And listen, there was no ugly intent there. I mean, I'm just, seriously, I was just curious.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Snodgrass?
Thank you. Just want to add to Mr. Carpenter, to your, like I said, thank you so much for what you've done to the county. And also want to just point out to Mr. Templar, I know we've had discussions about, earlier, about where you are, and just, I just want to make sure everyone understands. I support you where you are, and thank you for what you have been doing. But also with Ben, I think we've ran a process, and I want to see where that goes. So, but a lot of good work tonight as we continue to get through this budget, and just looking forward to finishing the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snodgrass. Mr. Gardner?
I'd just like to thank my colleagues for supporting my project at Mount Pisgah. I think it could be and is going to be transformational for that community. I think you will be proud in the few years to see what we're going to do up there. So again, I thank you. Mr. Carpenter, it's been a pleasure. We're going to miss you, but we still have your phone number. So we'll be in touch, but thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. And I will be last, but not least. Let me start off by saying that I appreciate each and every one of you to my right and my left, and even the ones that are not here. And because I don't always vote with you and support your ideas doesn't mean that I'm a bad person or a person that don't care. I'm passionate about what I do. I try to put a lot of thought and understanding in my votes and my decisions as I talk to the constituents throughout the county. It's not just in my area where I represent. And so when we don't agree, we don't have to be upset at one another. We can just don't agree and move on to the next item that's on the agenda. And I'm always willing and available to have an adult conversation outside these halls with any of you. I don't run from my vote, I don't hide from my vote. My vote is my vote, and it is who I am. A lot of good work has gotten done tonight. Roll your sleeves up, be ready for third reading. It's going to be round two at 5:15 Walnut Street. So, you know, come with your ideas, come with your funding mechanisms and all that so we can move through without having any discord on how it's going to be funded, this, that, and the other. So let's do our due diligence before our next meeting on what we want to fund and how we're going to fund it. I say to all the citizens that went out to vote tonight and earlier, I congratulate you for doing your due diligence and your duty. That means a lot. That is your civic duty and is to get out and vote and cast who you think are the best candidates. And I just want to thank all the citizens of Kershaw County who's gotten out and taking care of their duties. Vic, I'm tired of telling you bye. That's because I want you to stay though, and I know that's not possible. But man, do I wish you Godspeed, and as I always say now, just make sure you got more than one bedroom where you're buying because there'll be a few of us gathered together, Danny and a few others, and we'll come up and we'll be some of your slum visitors where we'll sleep in an air mattress or whatever, but we'll come up to see you. Danny, I want to give you a boost of confidence as well. I can't concur more so than with Mr. Snodgrass and Mr. Connel. I fully believe in you, and if I didn't, I wouldn't have taken the vote to put you where you are. I just think there's a little bit of the process that we have to go through, and you understand that. You're an old Navy man. Out of all people that understand that, I know you understand that. And just continue to do the job you do. Ride the wave, you know what I mean by that? Ride the wave. Don't get seasick of me, okay? And you'll be okay. With that, I turn to Mr. Carpenter for administrative briefing.
Members of council, I would remind you that our summer playground program is in full swing. Encourage you to stop by if you get a chance to see these kids and see some of our great county employees out there working with them. As always, I encourage you to look at our public safety, look at our EMS and our fire guys that are out there. This is the dangerous time of the year at the lake, and unfortunately, they seem to have to respond frequently to unfortunate incidents up there. So be aware that they're out there and that they are putting their lives on the line too to ensure that our citizens are safe and protected. I wish to thank this council for the opportunity you've given me the last 11 years, and I wish to thank my team. You guys are good, but they're great. And anything positive that has been accomplished in the last 11 years and not because of you or because of me is because of them. And the good stories that have happened are because of them. So I thank them for being on a team with me, and that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Dubose?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything.
Okay, well, we love you two. With that being said, there's no executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it was made by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mr. Connel. All in favor, raise your hand, and it is unanimous. Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Connel, and Mr. Jones. So Ms. Mary can have this for the recording. Thank you.